Good evening and welcome to the Town Council Meeting of Monday, January 9th, 2023, here at 7:02 PM in the McKinnon Council Chambers. Relative to Mass. General Watch Chapter 38, Section 20F, and for the benefit of the public, this meeting is being recorded by both video and audio methods. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second order of business is roll call, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Montigny?
Present.
Counselor Lozo?
Present.
Counselor Adams is present. Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Rivas?
Present.
Counselor Steves?
Present.
Counselor Dow?
Present.
We have eight present. Here is a quorum. At this time, I'd like to read a note. It is with profound sorrow that tonight we mourn the passing of former counselor-at-large, Conrad Vandal, at the age of 75. As a young man, Counselor Vandal served his country for three years in the U.S. Army, including time in Vietnam. While in the service, Conrad received half a dozen medals and badges for meritorious service. Starting in 1991, Conrad served his hometown as an elected official. He was a school committeeman for two terms, after which he was elected a counselor-at-large for six terms. Most importantly, Counselor Vandal was a loving and devoted husband, father, and grandfather. The current Town Council wishes to extend its sincerest condolences to the family on Conrad's passing and offer many thank yous for his service to town and country. Let us now pause for a moment of silence to remember Counselor-at-large Conrad Vandal. Thank you. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council Meeting minutes of Monday, December 19th, 2022.
Two more.
Second.
We have a motion by Counselor Lozo, a second by Counselor Adams. Any discussion, any amendments, changes, additions? There being none, all those in favor? Opposed? One opposed, Counselor Dow. Vote is seven to one, motion passes. Item number four, Subcommittee Reports. General Government, Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting on the third. Items numbers 12, 15, and 16 are on tonight's agenda, and we also talked a little bit more about the issues. We're looking at the issues, possibly bringing back the whole issue of the, let's see, what am I doing there? We've got talks, we're talking, possibly talking about other issues that come forward, including the possible bylaws surrounding drone use, but we don't, we don't know where that's going to go, if we're going to do that at all, to be honest with you. And at the moment, I will bring up the other items when we get them. I don't have a meeting scheduled yet, but we're in the process of creating one for next week's time.
Very good, thank you. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The DPW Subcommittee had a meeting on January 4th at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room, in attendance for myself, Counselor Steves, Counselor Dow, and Citizen Member Splain. There were several citizens who also attended the meeting to speak to road conditions, potholes on Gulfwood Road, ice dams on Old North Wood Stock Row, and trash issues throughout town. On tonight's agenda, number 11, we voted to confirm Town Manager appointment of Nathan Pallone as DPW Maintenance Equipment Operator. We voted to approve application for a speed feedback in school zone speed limit sign. That would be Agenda Item Number 17 tonight. We also voted to approve a proposed job description for the construction inspector position, Agenda Item Number 18 tonight, and we voted to approve the award of timber harvest to Anderson Timber for purchase of timber. That would be Agenda Item Number 20 tonight. At this time, we don't have a meeting scheduled, and that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Education and Human Services, Counselor Montigny.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a meeting scheduled for January 18th, Wednesday, 6:00 PM in the Rice Room. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. January 4th, we had a meeting in the Veterans Room. Agenda items number 21 through 28 are on tonight's agenda, and our next scheduled meeting is February 6th. Thank you.
Very good. And Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lozo.
Mr. Chairman, through the chair, we had a meeting earlier tonight at 6 o'clock, and the issues will be on the next agenda. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Item number five, Chairman's Announcements. I have one announcement this evening. I know it's late, it's January 9th. However, in speaking with some citizens, I was asked to specifically mention the holiday decorations and pass on these citizens' compliments on basically a job well done. They think it's the best it's been, and they wanted me to make sure that the town heard about that and that their sentiments were passed along. So, thank you very much for the holiday decorations. I think they're spectacular myself, very worthwhile. That's all I have. Item number six, Town Managers' Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to you, members of the council, those here in the chambers and those watching at home. Just a couple of quick announcements. We were notified since the last meeting that the town has received a Green Communities grant in excess of $130,000. These will be primarily for school-related energy efficiency, lighting for some of the schools. I was going to make an announcement relative to the USDA, but the fire station's going to incorporate that in their presentation. We have some good news on that front. As some of you know, since the last time we met, we had an issue with the wall at 11 West Street next to the school maintenance building. I'm working with the inspections as well as DPW on that. We contacted one of the engineers that we have on our list to go out there and do an engineering assessment to see what's going to be done with the wall, and we've already informed our insurance carrier about the issues there. I've been working with Mr. Julian. We went out to visit 30 Charlton Street last week. He's going to have an update. We've been in communication with the owner as well as the contractor. Mr. Julian's been working with the contractor. We did have Mr. Truax and his crew in over the weekend and made the repairs to the slate roof. I did send some photos over the weekend that Mr. Truax provided. We'll have to see, as Counselor Adams says, what happens when we get the next big rain to see how it holds up, but I have every bit of faith that that was done properly. And today, Fire Chief Norman and Deputy Chief Hewlick, Fire Station Building Committee Chairman Jovan, and I had the fortune to meet with representatives of Senator Warren's office. First, we did a tour of the existing fire station, pointed out all the needs over there. After we were done, I brought them over for a quick tour of this building and pointed out all the needs that the council has raised, including the HVAC, insulation ceiling, the roofs, the pointing. So, they're going to follow up with us on both to see what, if any, funds they may be able to find for us, including looking at some congressional spending that may be available to the respective senators here in the Commonwealth. So, we're doing everything we can to find additional funding for all the projects here in town, including the Town Hall, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. Item number seven is Presentation. Tonight, we have two Proclamations and a Fire Station Building Committee Update, so The first proclamation reads as follows. Presented to Lucille LeBeuf, resolved by the Council of the Town of Southbridge. Whereas Lucille LeBeuf is a lifelong resident of the Town of Southbridge and an election worker since 1977. Whereas Ms. LeBeuf dedicated 45 years to the Town of Southbridge. Whereas the Southbridge Town Council wishes to extend its sincere gratitude to Ms. LeBeuf for her many years of dedication to the Town of Southbridge in various aspects of being an election worker. Whereas the Town Clerk wishes to extend her sincerest gratitude for all her hard work and willingness to serve the Town of Southbridge for 45 years of dedicated service. Now therefore, the Town Council of Southbridge does hereby honor Lucille LeBeuf for her commitment for representing the Town of Southbridge and its voters with dedication and perseverance emblematic of our community. In witness therefore, this ninth day of January 2023 by John L. Daniel, Chairperson of the Southbridge Town Council, and by Madeline I. Bonadieus, Town Clerk. Lucille?
This is a great surprise because I was told this was a meeting for the election workers tonight, that we were going to have new rules. So, this is very, very surprising. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you for all of your service.
The second proclamation reads as follows. Presented to Roland Lefty Varren, resolved by the Council of the Town of Southbridge. Whereas Roland Lefty Varren has retired from services to the citizens and students of Southbridge in 2022 after over 60 years of combined services. And whereas Lefty served as a teacher and coach in the Southbridge Public Schools for over 40 years. And whereas Lefty served as athletic director for 14 years, was the voice of the pioneers until 2007, and also oversaw the installation of lights at McMahon Field. And whereas Lefty served on the Southbridge Recreation Committee for six years. And whereas Lefty served as the stealer of weights and measures for over 50 years, retiring in 2022. Now therefore, on behalf of the grateful citizens and students of Southbridge, the Town Council of Southbridge hereby offers a sincere thank you, its warmest congratulations on your retirement, and best wishes for continued good health in the future. In witness therefore, this ninth day of January 2023 by John L. Daniel, Chairperson, Southbridge Town Council. We have two more proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say a couple of words before I, before I read these proclamations. I apologize for being a little bit late today. I was over in Dudley at another meeting with Senator Fatman, and when we left the meeting as quick as possible, Senator Fatman went east and I came west. So, I'm, so Senator Fatman sends his best regards as well, and he has a citation here as well. So, I have a citation from both the House of Representatives and the Senate. Now, the important thing to know about these two citations that I have here is the House one's much more important. Right? So, with that said, I'm going to read my citation, and I just want to say, you know, you know, as we kind of, I represent a few towns, I represent four towns, and, you know, I've had the great fortune to, to give out citations to people who have been in the towns for a long time, who've done a lot of things, who've spent so much time in the town and given so much. And it's really, it's really an honor because to meet people like Lefty and I think in this town of George Vassal, who's passed away a couple of years or a year or so ago, people who have just given so much for so long to this time, you're really the glue that holds these towns together. And, and so we give you citations, and it's really just kind of a feeble attempt that we have to say thank you for all the work that you've done. It's so important. We're so happy to have major acquaintance and so happy to present these citations. So, I will read the important one, and you can read the other one later at your leisure, but it says, it says, "Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Roland Lefty Varren in recognition of your tireless and selfless work in your more than 60 years of service in a capacity, various capacities to the Town of Southbridge. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this ninth day of January 2023 at the State House in Boston, signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, and myself, State Representative Peter Duran." Congratulations, Lefty.
I just want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for this, for this recognition. It's much appreciated. I'm now 90 years of age, and it was time to retire, so I did.
All right, so we'll move along, please. Presentation C, the Fire Station Building Committee Update by Committee Chair Jack Jovan.
Thank you. On behalf of the Southbridge Fire Station Building Committee, I just want to take this opportunity just to give a brief update as to what the status of the fire station project is. As you can see, Deputy Chief Hewlick is putting up some boards which outline the current design, schematic design of the fire station. And what I'm going to ask Deputy Chief Hewlick to do is just give a brief rundown of what these drawings that you see, and then I'll get through some of the timelines and the financials that we are looking for right now. So, this is going to be, these were hot off the press last week. We got those last Wednesday. Deputy Chief will talk to you about some of the highlights of what this plan looks like, based on many years, as we discussed earlier today. Chief, Deputy Chief Hewlick's been on this project over 20 years, pretty much his whole career. He lives and breathes in that station, and I'll turn over to Deputy Chief Hewlick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, councilors, citizens. Giving you a brief update of where we are now, obviously, things are starting to happen more quickly. The town now retains the properties that the station will sit on, and the images you have here in front of you are what the station could potentially look like. Obviously, that has changed several times over the last couple of years, and we're getting closer and closer to what it may actually look like. Below the proposed exterior elevation, we have an existing site set up, and that shows the properties that encompass the, what the fire station property will be on. Currently, the surveyors have been looking at all the properties, and will be moving forward, bringing it into one single unit for the construction. On the other side, we have the potential floor plan, which originally started several years ago at a program size of 36,000 square feet. Due to cost increases and other factors, we have brought that down to 28,000 square feet. So, we have substantially reduced the size of the facility where that we think it can still accomplish what we need it to. So, the final is the proposed site, site plan for that, which shows where the station would sit. Currently, it also shows an auxiliary building. Due to the points that I've already brought up, that currently will sit as an ad alternate, and we'll see what other potential funding sources there. So, it also would be, we've been in discussion with Ms. Dean in type of multiple usage with looking at the projects that they have going on at the Henry Street Field, and we could look at it in the future of adding possibly restroom facilities and some more space for recreation as well. So, that's just a quick update of where we are. We're meeting essentially twice a month at this point, and things are going to start to happen much faster.
Thank you, Deputy. Yeah, so we are constantly looking at the budget for this project as well as the timeline. So, as far as the timeline goes, right now, we are in schematic design. We met last week where we reviewed the schedule of highlights throughout this project. The architect is working an aggressive schedule with schematic design. We're looking to have an estimate of opinion from the OPM roughly by mid-February. We made a decision as a committee to make sure that we have a third-party estimation done on this project, at two points within this project, to make sure that we are staying within cost and that our design is not exceeding what our expectation is. We'll then move in, in mid-February through April, to design, development, and drawings and specifications, with hopefully a presentation on the design itself in May of 2023. From there, we'll then move into pre-qualifications and get to bidding and construction documents. We're estimating right now that this project would most likely go out to bid sometime in the September to October of this year's timeline. So, we're constantly working that schedule. The architect knows that we're on an aggressive schedule to get this done. I'd like to thank the Town Manager and the Owner's Project Manager on the negotiations to get the property. That's what the delay was for us to be moving to this point. As we are now owners of that property, we are working to assist the residents with the relocation, and we've allocated some monies for that. So, those are the highlights on the construction end of it. Actually, we will start next week with talking with the mechanical engineers about what kind of mechanics we want in this building. We've talked about different designs. As you can see, the movement of the auxiliary building, originally, it was going to be in a different part of the property. We have moved it adjacent to Martin Street and Henry Street in order to move it closer to the fields with the goal in mind that this would, that auxiliary building would be part of the overall complex. I know there's, in regards to funding, today, Deputy Chief Hewlick, the Town Manager, the Chief Norman, we had an opportunity to meet with representatives of Senator Warren's office. They came onsite today to discuss what the project entailed. They took a tour of the existing fire station. We provided them materials as to what the project is proposed and what some of the potential obstacles that we may have when it comes to funding certain parts of this project. There is no money out there in the federal government right now for construction of fire stations, and we know that that is an issue. However, we talked about some solutions as to possible breaking up to different infrastructure monies and see what we could do to lessen the impact to the town and make sure that this project becomes a reality. Our overall goal right now is the main building, to make sure that we build that and to get the proper facility for the fire station and the firefighters that serve our community. Previously, we came before the council, well, a step back, I just spoke to Representative Durant as well. We've had previous meetings with Senator Fatman, looking for state, any state infrastructure money. Representative Durant assured me that he would be in contact with me as soon as possible to discuss on the House side. Senator Fatman will be working on the Senate side. So, we are looking at all state and federal partnerships within the town money. We go to these representatives, the biggest thing they always said to us was, what is the skin of the game of Town of Southbridge in this, in order for us to get additional funding or to recruit some of the money to assist in this project? We are putting up $25.7 million. That is all the Town of Southbridge, as far as taxpayers, will be requested to put up. Hopefully, we don't make that mark. We are trying to come on time, on budget, or under budget, as we have done, and I have done with my good friend Counselor Lozo on previous projects. So, that is the goal in mind, is always to come on time with a project that is feasible for the Town of Southbridge. I know there were some conversations with some individuals and councilors as to some concerns, that a comment was made at our Fire Station Building Committee meeting, whereas our Owner's Project Manager stated that right now, the budget for this project is $26,035,061. Well, that is just a budget based on opinion of probable cost. We could simply say that, hey, we're going to stay within the 25.7 and hold wishful thinking, and we'll just have 25.7. We are being realistic in what we are seeing on the ground at this time to make sure that we work with the architect and our Owner's Project Manager to make sure that the project comes in within cost. That $26 million figure that's thrown out there is not the final project dollar amount, is simply based on the budget right now on our opinion of probable cost of the construction end, which I had mentioned at a previous meeting. We put that into the budget as construction cost, which, and then we allocated different monies throughout the contingency, our Owner's contingency, to make sure that we kind of came out balanced. Unfortunately, we're not balanced at this time, but we're working towards that final project. We still have to go out to bid. We have a long way to go out to bid. We are seeing some things, and people that I've talked to in the industry, they're starting to see that bids are actually coming down, materials are starting to come down. So, when we forecast that opinion of probable cost on construction, we base it out on what those dollars were two months ago and forecast it to our bid in November. Those numbers could be changing. Those bids could be coming in smaller. So, it's a moving target. When I say it's a moving target, it's just, we're trying to be realistic in our budgeting to make sure that we do not design a building that is not going to be something that we can build. That'd be the worst mistake. I've seen that done in other communities. So, we are constantly working that budget to make sure that it isn't within target. The one piece of good news that we do have, and through the hard work of Peg Dean, Deputy Fire Chief, the Chief Town Manager's Office, the grant that we proposed that we applied for, for the USDA Rural Grant, and the amount of reimbursement, well, it's reimbursement to the Town of Southbridge, we were awarded that grant, $913,000 to the Town of Southbridge for the fire station project. So, now we'll look at the budget, and those monies that we, the items that we're able to apply for within that grant are all the computers, the furniture, and all that within the budget. We'll now look at that budget where we zeroed out our contingency, and we'd never want to have a 0% contingency. We zeroed that out to try to balance the budget. We'll now move that into Owner's Contingency, the balance of that, as we work throughout the project. So, there's no increase to the Town of Southbridge, it's 25.7. We were able to apply for that grant with the monies within the 25.7, and we were awarded that grant. So, we continue to work this project, and we look forward to bringing some exciting more news as we move forward. We do have work on the ground right now. We're doing some geotech. You probably see some trucks down there this week with geotech testing, and we're moving to the other points of our project. So, that's, that's where we're at. So, it's exciting stuff because we're really going to be moving fast, as I've talked to, this is where we really get the meat on the bones and, and get going with this project and make it a reality. So, thank you.
Very good. Counselor Lozo?
I'd just like to thank Chairman Jovan and Deputy Chief in your committee for coming forward. I think the most important thing at this point here is the Information Highway to the council and to the taxpayers of Southbridge. Everybody knows that people like to talk about what's going on, and sometimes it's not really going on that way. So, for myself, I'm a big fan of Information Highway, these, these drawings. I know they're, they're fresh off the press. Nice job, and it's, it's a good first step on the Information Highway to show them what they're getting. And I know and I understand knocking the tin to make it all fit on time and under budget is, is a, is a task, and you're going to run into things through the project that are unforeseen, and we're going to have to deal with them. But I think dealing in good faith, keeping that information coming to the public is the best thing we can do. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you. To that point about information with the public, Deputy Chief Hewlick, we had talked about that at our last meeting, and we do have a website that we are able to get information up to. Deputy Chief Hewlick's been working on that website to make sure that we're active. We had some- We had some communication with the architect because they were kind of setting up that platform. So that has been reactivated, so we will put up the information on these new drawings as we are right now. We have information about the owner's project manager. We will throw up the photos of the budget, where we're at with the budget. We will update those. We plan on being as transparent to the taxpayers of Southbridge as I possibly can be. So that information will be free-flowing and constant updates as requested.
Councilor Montigny.
Thank you. Excuse me. I decided, rather than continue arguing about the bottom line, to just go to the fire station meeting myself, and I have to say, I was very impressed. I think the gentleman, I think his name was Rick, that you guys have hired as the project manager in his company, he really seems to know, like, and have a really good grasp on everything going on with this. So it made me feel a lot more comfortable about this. And I realize no one here is a fortune teller, but, you know, it seems we could go into some sort of more of a recession. I have a feeling that, as a previous speaker stated, that in good faith, I think it will come down and be balanced, but I'm ambitious, you know, for your discussions with the House in the future about maybe getting some money there, because at that point, you know, if a large chunk of it can be, you know, funded federally or in the state, it would be much different in the end. We're not talking 25 versus 26, maybe we're talking 25 versus 20. Well, maybe we have enough for the alternate building and everything. And then I spent a little time at the fire station the next morning and just talking things over, looking at the plans again, and I'm really happy as opposed to maybe the last meeting. And then Chairman Jovan on the building committee does a great job, and I could see that at the meeting, everybody's well-informed, and it was very transparent, in my opinion. So I just wanted to say thank you for that, and I'm looking forward to seeing this continue to grow. Thanks.
Councilor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Did the project manager at your meeting say that this project is now $26.6 million, the price tag for the project, and based on the $900,000 grant that you got?
That did not include the $900,000 grant. That was not applied to the budget.
All right.
We have not applied that money to the budget.
So did the project manager say this is $26.6 million?
I think I stated that at the beginning. Yes, I did.
So the town council at the meeting that we voted on this, we voted for 25.7 million, and that was the, that was the total amount. There was nothing more than that. It was a set amount. We sent it up to the residents to vote on 25.7 million, not one penny more than that. Am I correct?
I think I answered that question already at the beginning. I stated that this budget, we could be very non-transparent and say, the construction cost is 19 million, as we said before, go out to bid and see what happens. We've done the opinion of probable cost based on projected budget. At this time, it would show that we have a potential deficit of $300,000, potential. We haven't gone out to bids, we haven't done any third-party estimating. That number could change, and we were trying to be fully transparent that based on what we saw at that date and time, that snapshot, that construction cost was $20 million, more than what we had originally anticipated. So we showed on paper that there potentially a $300,000 deficit after we've already expended all our contingency money. So we're not saying today that this project is $26 million. We're saying, based on an opinion of numbers, that's potentially what it could be. And we continued, as Councilor Lazo said, knock the tin to get it down to the 25.7. Yes, you're right. The town council voted 25.7 that we would appropriate, the town council would appropriate 25.7, based on an opinion of probable cost that we took place in 2020, prior to going out to the vote. So when we came before council, everybody stated, well, what are we going to put out there? What is the number we're going to put out there? Some counselors said, well, just go to the town and say, hey, do a debt exclusion and not put a dollar amount. We had lengthy conversation, watched the tape, because I remember it. Let's just throw out numbers and just throw out numbers here or there. We said, no, let's get an opinion of probable cost at that snapshot in time of what this project may entail. We said 25.7. Town appropriated 25, the council appropriated 25.7. The town, the town said, okay, contingent on, we will appropriate to 25.7. This council as a body could come back and say, hey, as we do in other projects, there are other overruns in other projects all the time. We do a DPW tower sludge de-watering plan project, and the opinion of cost at that time, I remember all these meetings, counselors will remember them, they come in and they say, hey, we need to transfer from stabilization another $100,000 because this screw didn't work, and the council votes additional money. That's how projects go. But what I'm saying is, we are working to make sure that this project comes in on time and at the budget that we propose. And at this time, we are giving estimates of what we think potentially could happen and be transparent.
All right. The council voted to bond 25.7 million, so it's a little bit different than saying, this is what a job is, and then we have a lot of change orders, but that's exactly why some of us have concerns, is because we always have these cost overruns. DPW is an excellent example. I think it was bought for 1.5 million, and they ended up, it's closer to 10 million now, spent on that building. So that's, that's why some of us are a little concerned, and we want to make sure you keep the costs down. I, I think you guys are doing a great job. Don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I want to make sure. We voted to bond 25.7 million, and if you can get it down, that's great, but past practice in this town, I haven't seen too many projects that have come under budget, unless they weren't completed, and then it might be under budget. So the other thing that I want to say is, you are using the veterans' room. I would appreciate it if you would record the meeting. That's what the veteran room is for. If you don't want to record it, then I will request a key to record that meeting. A camera is set up in that room for recording meetings, and I would appreciate it if you would record your meetings for transparency. Thank you.
That's fine. I mean, there's other meetings that are held in there that may not, but that's fine. I, I, I respect that, okay. To the point of projects, Councilor Lazo and I served as school committee members and on a school building project that the town council appropriated a certain dollar amount to this project. And we worked very hard on that project to make sure that it came under budget. I am using the same model that my good friend, Councilor Lazo, used as chairman of that project, that we worked together with in that project, to make sure that the project came in on time, under budget. We had moving pieces all over the place for that project. My other good friend, John LaFlesch, who's sitting in the audience, who was superintendent of schools of Bay Path, has been involved in building projects there. He could come up here and probably articulate how projects go as well. We are doing the best we can to make sure that we complete this project that is desperately needed, on time and within the budget, and that's going to be the mission going forward. And if we can grab some grant money to assist us, we will do that as we have. Kudos to Peg Dean, $913,000. We should be standing up applauding that young lady for the work that she did to get us $913,000 that was just sitting there, that the town manager and her found a pool of $60 million. Get this grant in as soon as possible, and we grabbed that money, and look at where we're at today. $913,000 in our pocket that could have gone somewhere else. Thank you.
Councilor Lazo.
The discussion of cost is going to go on in this project from the beginning to the end. Number one, the voters voted 25.7. That is the budget number that is plugged in in the beginning of the project. I know when I headed up the middle high school, which was the biggest infrastructure project in the town's history, I worked with, at that time, School Committee Jovan, his chairman, and the way it worked was, we plugged in 25.7 on this one. Ours was much larger, probably doubled, I think it was up towards 60-something million, but I chaired a committee that was, that was a very talented committee. We had great people all the way around. We had a town manager knocked it out of the park, Senator Moore, I mean, we had state muscle to change the equation so we could get the financing for the town. There were a lot of moving parts, but the one thing that I can tell you is that when I call it knocking the tin, we did not raise taxes. We sold a DPW bond and a Pleasant Street school to make up our percentage. We were very fortunate to have 87% funding from the state, which we don't have on the fire department, and we had to cut out a lot of stuff. You'll notice you go to your new high school, on their baseball fields, there was a concrete slab there, but there was no press box. We cut out a lot of the nice-to-haves and said, maybe we can later on through Bay Path have some projects done on my field. But what we did was, the auditorium and various things, the foyer had to be cut back. Chairman Jovan is going through that right now, and I think that if we can get these state officials, and the one that disappoints me the most is Congressman Neal, which Southbridge has always been supportive of him, he sits on the ways and means, very powerful committee, and I really don't see a good line of communication or any funding, which shocks me. But moving forward, they are talking about eliminating a surplus building, which we would like to have. So when you do a building project, there's the nice-to-have and there's the have-to-have. You have to have bays for the trucks, you have to have offices, you have to have certain facilities inside a fire department now. So moving forward, I agree the 25.7 is a starting point. Another thing we're not factoring in, when we came up with the 25.7, it was an inflationary portion. We thought this was going to be the bottom line, no more than that. It was said by the sitting chairman. But the thing is, in the reality of the construction business, what happens is, you're going to take some things out, you're going to put some things in. We are in an economy right now that is becoming very soft. Inflation's going up. We built the high school at probably the worst economic times with the best funding. So what happens is, we've got the best bids. Our pricing came in through the floor, so we came in on time, under budget, and did not raise taxes because of that building. Now, we're in a different situation, but I think Council, no, Council Jovan, former Council Jovan, chairman, understands that, yeah, 25.7 is the budget number that we started with. As we go through this project, and as we do more borings, and as we do demolition, infrastructure, there's different types of financing that could help out this project. But when they say on time and under budget, on time, you'll know by the time you dig it, hit break ground with the gold shovels and a completion to the turnkey, and if you can make it in that timeframe, it'll depend on so many factors. That's why it's so hard to be on time and under budget. Right now, we're at the beginning stages. He totally understands what I'm talking about, and I think moving forward, I said in the beginning, do nothing's not an option, and we're at the point now, this is where the site is, this is where the building's going to happen, and we need to come together to find the best possible fire station for the Town of Southbridge and push for an on-time and under budget. But that's going to be a long road, and it's going to be further down the road. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
At this minute, I'm calling a five-minute recess. Call this meeting back to order. We're back from recess. We move to agenda item number eight, citizens' forum. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council on an issue not on tonight's agenda?
Thank you. Joseph Dow, 736 Worcester Street. I'd like to respond back on a matter happened November 30 in the news, Telegram and Gazette Newspaper Act.
Joe.
Yes.
You can talk about this, but it has to be during the agenda item, not during citizens' forum.
I'm talking about citizen forum. That's different. I want to do my statement as a citizen because...
The council rules?
It is no council rule, because the matter happened as a business owners and as a residence of Town of Southbridge. It wasn't happened as a town council at the moment. We can talk about that when I go back as a town council. Now, I want to speak as a residence and business owner in town.
No, the council rules state that citizens' forum is for items that are not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. That's a statement I want to read, what happened with me on November 30.
I have no problem with you speaking during the agenda item.
But I don't want to speak as a councillor. I want to speak as a resident.
You can speak as a resident during the agenda item.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council regarding an issue not on tonight's agenda?
Hi, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place, right here in Great Southbridge. I come to you as the head of the Southbridge Holiday Visions, because I really want to point out the wonderful effort that was made this Saturday, actually, the last two weekends in terms of decoration retrieval. This time of year gets a little bit scary for some of us on that, in our small handful of people that work during the year, wondering whether the weather's going to hold, whether, you know, it'll be snowy, freezing, and we take the weather and the opportunity to get out there and get these items back into the warehouse. So while we did start that on New Year's weekend, because the weather was perfect, we just didn't have a lot of volunteers. We had a few really good people, like Dan and Kim and my grandson and son-in-law, who showed up one of the few days, and we picked up a lot of stuff. However, there was work afoot within the school to come out and help us. We, I had been in touch with Jason Linders, who's the director of operations and athletics at the middle high school, great guy. We had been in touch a little bit just before the holiday, and I told, I'd heard he might be interested in having some of the football players come and help us, and boy, the idea of having some strong youth pick up those heavy skids and such was music to my ears. So I did reach out to Jason. Jason reached out to every department. Scared me a little. I thought we might have, you know, 100 kids show up, and each of them would maybe unscrew one screw. But luckily, we had about 20, 20 student athletes show up on Saturday, along with Nick Clark, who's the football coach, and James Prue, who's the volleyball and softball coach. They came out early Saturday morning into that wonderful chilly air, and like I said, we had football players, the majority were underclassmen, ninth graders mostly. We also had representatives from volleyball, basketball, and the National Honor Society, all of them who showed up, mostly freshmen with a few upperclassmen as well. I believe we had a couple of juniors and a senior. Can't remember all their names, but I have to say, everyone who helped was very impressed, all of our adults, who some knew and mostly veterans who helped us that day, were very impressed with the youth that showed up. And we managed to clean up the entire Rotary Common, gazebo, dresser park, and the cars, which they enjoyed rolling down the sidewalks of Main Street, like in two hours. It was absolutely incredible, the amount of work that got done. The kids were not afraid to grab a screwdriver and, you know, other tools and pull those rebars, and yes, carry all 12 very heavy skids from the Town Common to the waiting trucks. So thank you to the youth of this community. It sets a fine example for what's out there. I know there's more. They have jobs, they have commitments, and we're hoping to see them at a future date. I would be amiss this time. Normally, I don't do it, but I'm going to because it was a small group, and boy, I pray I didn't miss anybody. I put my thinking cap on, but we had our regulars, Becky and Joe, Deputy Chief Joe Hewlock, who comes with his truck and is great for our trees. Dan Grabowski, you've heard his name since, I think, 2009, when we started. Again, I mentioned my grandson, Ben. Janelle and Mike Zuziak. We also had Beth Stevens, a regular, Gus and Maureen, Councilor Gus and Maureen, Mike Brunel, Leanne Manville, Nancy Harwood, Lieutenant Jacques Clanian and Kim, who, Kim helped both weekends, newbie to this. I'm not sure she'll come back, but she seemed to have a good time, so thanks, Kim. Of course, my head elf, Jillian, and Mike, her counterpart, and I couldn't do it without the support of Bob. So I just want to thank these people. I'm really hoping that I didn't forget anybody. I also shout out to Great Oak Pizza, who assisted us in feeding everyone that day, and the Southbridge Police Department, who allowed us to come in out of the weather and use the community room. And everybody was, I must say, again, very impressed. They were all mindful of being neat, clean, picking up after themselves, and I think we left the community center, the community room at the police station in good order. So again, can't thank them enough. We ask that you, if you are able to, follow us on Southbridge Holiday Visions Facebook throughout the year. We have announcements, we have updates this... We have announcements, we have updates as to what we're doing, we hold workshops so that we can get this done for the next season, and you're certainly welcome to reach out our contact information. My information is there, and we hope that we will get a few more volunteers. First weekend in November, it'll be here before you know it, but we could certainly use your help throughout the year before then. So thank you again for letting us use your streets and for supporting the storage of all those items that the town owns. So thank you again, and that concludes my Southbridge Holiday Visions update to the town council. I have another hat.
Certainly.
If I may change over to Southbridge Community Television Access. The Southbridge Community Television Advisory Committee needs members. You know, do you have an interest in your cable access, what you see here, the meetings, the various programming that happens? Maybe you're just interested in video and editing. We need that help as well. Perhaps you want to make sure that these meetings, town events, public programming continue to be available in Southbridge and broadcast well beyond our borders. Let's help you, you know, help us set the direction of where cable is going here in our community, fight for the ratepayers, the subscribers in our negotiations that are ongoing. But so anyway, get in touch with us, come in for a tour of our studio, set up a time to talk with myself, the team, see if this is something that you would be interested in. The time commitment can be minimal or as much as you'd like. We ask, you could also go online, you can fill out a committee interest form on the town website, return it to the town manager's office, and we'll contact you. Join the Southbridge Community Television Advisory Committee today. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to address the council this evening on an item not on tonight's agenda? Not seeing any. Let's move on, please. Item number nine, update for thirty Chalton Street. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just because this is table, I'm going to move to take the following agenda item from December nineteenth, agenda item number eighteen from the table, which states to determine whether the interim building commissioner shall be authorized to enter upon the premises with the necessary workman and assistance and cause such unsafe structure to be made safe or taken down without delay, and a proper fence put up for the protection of the passerby or to be made secure pursuant to match general law of chapter one forty-three, section seven, to authorize the use of the town attorney to take all actions necessary, including not limited to initiating litigation, to secure the town's access to the property and ability to recover its costs and to authorize the town manager to enter the contract and assign all documents thereon to.
I need a second.
He did.
All right. You made the motion.
It was Counselor Steve's second, right?
Very good. Okay, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Counselor Adams, second by Counselor Steve's to take from the table that motion that was to spread. It is not debatable. It is not amendable. We will now vote. All those in favor. Opposed?
I don't understand. I don't understand why it's not even on here. What are we tabling? It's not on here.
Just to bring up the issue for discussion, that's all it is.
It's not, it's not debatable, and it's not amendable. All right, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't debate it or discuss. It's not debatable, it's not amendable. Okay, so it moves seven to one. Very good. The discussion may now proceed. Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I believe we have our building inspector, Mr. Julian, here to give you an update. As I indicated, he and I have been out to visit the property together and separately. I was out there earlier today. At first glance, it didn't appear to be anybody there. I did notice Mr. Rivera's truck, which Mr. Julian just updated me that they were back there later today doing some work. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Julian, who can update you as to our conversations with Mr. Rivera, Mr. Monaco, who's the contractor, and what's going on on the site.
All righty, so since our last meeting, they started to remove some of the loose rocks, the facade. The engineer has since changed direction on how they want to contain the building and make it safe. He submitted today through the builder, Mr. Monaco, a new design. I have a couple copies if you want, you can pass them around, you can take a look at them. What they want to do now is they're going to net it with steel netting with throughbolts, and what they were doing today there is drilling the holes for the throughbolts. The netting should start on next Monday. They're waiting for the product to come in. It's all been ordered. So what they're essentially going to do is wrap the spires in the netting, throughbolt it, and secure two-by-fours as reinforcing all the way around with the netting. The netting product that they use is, it's made to hold back the stone. Different states use it where they have rock outcroppings along the highway. Sometimes you might see the netting, the steel netting over the rocks to keep the rocks from falling. It's the same material, and they're going to anchor it with, like I said, throughbolting, drilling straight through the wall, putting six-inch by six-inch steel plates on the inside and two-bys on the outside.
Counselor Steve's.
Yeah, through you to Mike. Do you think that those walls are stable enough to hold that weight?
Well, that's what the engineer decided once they started removing some of the rock. The engineer feels that it is. In my position, I can't really go against what the engineer says. So...
Okay. Do we have that in writing somewhere that he is, that he's thinking this way?
Nope, but I could request an updated engineer's report if you like.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea. I mean, if we're, if we're going to have all this documentation, we need, we need to know.
Yeah. Not a problem.
Anyone else? Counselor Lozlo.
Like, are you satisfied with the progress? Should the council take action against it, or are we moving in the right direction?
I think we're moving in the right direction, a little slower than I'd like to see, but I think we're moving in the right direction. I'd wait and see, you know, at our next meeting. They're promising me that, you know, the beginning of the week, they'll be putting the netting up. If it's not up by our next meeting, then I say we step in. But, you know, again, that's going to be up to you as well.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there a representative? I'm sorry. Okay, is there a representative here from the owners of the property? Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chairman, I did speak to Mr. Rivera earlier today, and he did not think he would be able to attend here. As for the progress, he did say to me that because we had some inclement weather over the holidays, we had a lot of rain, that did slow down some of the progress as well. But he said he would try, but obviously, he's not here. But he did forewarn me, there was a high likelihood he wouldn't be here.
Counselor Steve's.
Yeah, to follow up on this whole wire mesh thing, so is he planning on just doing it around the towers or around the entire building, or, I mean, what should we actually expect?
Right now, it's just the spires that we have talked about.
Do you think it might be necessary for the rest of the building?
Yes, and I'll urge that the engineer does review the rest of the building as well and come up with some plans, maybe, you know, a different idea or a different plan for different areas of the building. The spires are, you know, really the main focus right now. However, there is a lot of loose facade all around, so we will need a more in-depth plan. But for right now, we've got to secure the spires. We can work with the engineer at that point.
So once he's got this up, what's the next step?
Once it's made safe, it's really up to David Rivera as to what he wants to do with the building. Once it's safe, it's out of, out of my control under public safety.
Okay. Okay, so do you think that this will actually make it safe?
Yes, it will contain it as long as they, they bring the netting completely around and it's fastened together. Basically, it's making a cage, so it's only going to go as far as the cage will allow it to. And again, they do use this netting on the rock outcroppings along the highways for fallen rocks, so it is designed to stop rocks from falling, so it's designed to take the weight. As long as it's, you know, anchored properly and according to the engineer's specs, it shouldn't be an issue. Which, at which point, once they're done, I can request an inspection, so that I can go in and make sure that it follows the engineer's recommendations.
Okay, I hope that's true. I'm just kind of, kind of trying to picture the fact that you mentioned the idea of them using this on cliffs. It's a lot easier to anchor something into a cliff than it is to anchor it into a building that we know is already structurally possibly unsafe.
Correct.
Exactly. That's what I'm worried about.
I agree.
I'm worried that they may end up pulling the building down rather than, or parts of the building down rather than stabilizing it. That's what I'm concerned about. And I'm not, I'm not a builder by any means, but...
And again, that will go back to the substructure of the building.
Exactly.
Versus the facade. We already know the facade's loose, so the engineer feels that the substructure's strong enough to hold it. That goes back on the engineer's liability at that point.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Dow, then Counselor Reus.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Now, the net will hold the rock from falling down. I understand engineers, you review the building. How about the structure holding the gazebo on top? You know, it's a lot of weight sitting up there. Now, we secured the rock, don't fall everywhere, but the structure of the building carry that weight. It's safe to carry that weight and keep it not falling down? I mean...
Well, that's where we rely on the engineer's report.
Because now they have, you know, that paper saying only the, the stone falling down, but doesn't say anything...
About the substructure?
Correct.
You're right. And again, that's the engineer putting his, his word and his license on the line, saying that the substructure is safe.
Can we get any...
We can do a third-party engineer if we want to pay for it.
No, I mean, we can get a paper from the engineer saying the structural, it's safe to hold the gazebo on top.
Yes. I'll request it.
Something in our hand in case...
Yep, I can request a document from the engineer stating that.
Thank you.
Great. Counselor Reus.
So is it your expectation that they'll have this completed and the engineer will have reviewed it before our next meeting?
I don't know if it'll be completed. I was promised that it would be started by the beginning of next week. So I don't know how fast they work. I can't speak on behalf of their crew. But if they're working on it, to me, that would show good faith. If they're not working on it, then, you know, obviously, we'll have to step in and do our own thing.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Very good. What's the pleasure of the council? Would you like to table for another meeting?
I'll make a most to postpone it instead of table. So you don't have to take it off till the next meeting. When is our next meeting date? Would you plug that in?
Twenty-third.
I'll second.
On the twenty-third.
Very good. We have a motion to postpone to the twenty-third by Counselor Lozlo, second by Counselor Adams. All those in favor? Against? Thank you, Michael. Item number ten, vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Joseph Diaz to Economic Development Commission for a three-year term effective immediately through June thirty, twenty twenty-five, pending completion of state ethics.
Tobo.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lozlo, second by Counselor Steve's. Any discussion? Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Mr. Diaz has volunteered for this position. It was a four-to-zero vote, unanimous in favor, in support of his appointment and confirmation. Mr. Diaz provided, I believe it was on the second of December, we started having a conversation. We played a little phone tag, probably got ahold of each other. At that point in time, he showed his interest. He wasn't sure where he wanted to go, but we, we let, I think, through our conversations, moved you in the right direction. I move this on to Ms. Dean as well. Ms. Dean had a conversation with them, highly recommended him for this position. This will be number six on the economic commission, which is great when we start off with only a couple here a few months ago. And I appreciate Mr. Diaz stepping up to the plate like many of the volunteers in this town, and I highly recommend him for this volunteer position. Thank you.
Further discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Nathan Pallone as DPW Maintenance Man, Equipment Operator, for an indefinite term effective immediately, pending the successful completion of pre-employment physical and background screening and state ethics.
Tobo. Second.
Motion by Counselor Lozlo, second by Counselor Dow. Counselor McHedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subcommittee voted four to zero to send it up to the town council for approval. Thank you.
Very good. Very good. Any discussion? Counselor Lozlo.
I'd just like to comment on Nathan Pallone. He's a fine gentleman, Southbridge guy. He applied three times. He's a kid that wants to be here. He's a talented kid. I give Phil and the management team down at DPW kudos that they can see the light that some other people didn't see when this kid applied three times. Job well done, Phil, once again. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number twelve, vote to accept a donation from the Hyde Dexter Russell Charitable Foundation in the amount of one thousand dollars to be for the Southbridge Holiday Visions.
Tobo.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Steve's, second by Counselor Lozlo. Counselor Steve's.
We recommended that unanimously.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Once again, Hyde Dexter Russell comes through for the town. They're wonderful contributors to the town. They're constantly thinking of us, and I can't say enough about the fact that they, they do think about us all the time. They're very generous, and it's very helpful to the town, and I, on behalf of the council, I definitely appreciate what it is that they're doing for us. Item number thirteen. Item number thirteen I'm recusing myself from, I'm turning it over to Vice Chair Adams to conduct this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, agenda item number thirteen, vote to instruct and authorize the town manager in cooperation with town council to retain the services of an independent investigator to investigate the facts and circumstances of an incident taking place at town hall on November thirty of twenty twenty-two between Counselor-at-Large Dow and town staff, and to report the conclusion of the investigation to the town council on a prompt basis.
Tobo. Second.
Counselor Steve's motioned it. Counselor Montigny, second. Discussion. Actually, you know what I'll do is let me, let me go ahead and give kind of like a synopsis of what kind of transpired and brought us to this position today. Yeah, Counselor.
So I'd like to amend that and strike Counselor-at-Large.
I second that amendment.
Okay. We have a first and a second.
I'm Whit Grant.
We're going to discuss that now. So go ahead. Reminder, the motion itself at this point in time is to hire a third-party investigator.
Correct. But the way the agenda written, it's wrong, because when I was at the town office, the manager's office, I was as a residence and business owner helping a family, my brothers, to submit the license, what he never did before. So I didn't represent myself as a town council. I did not cross the desk. I was standing with the residents standing.
Counselor Dow. Yeah.
So that's why I want to amend that.
Got it.
To be removed as a Counselor-at-Large, keep Joseph Dow.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor. Any discussion on that? Counselor Lozlo?
I just would like to comment, the reason why I'm seconding the motion to amend is, when we as counselors walk into a town hall as business people, we walk in as business people, I walk in with a package of paperwork to renew a license, I walk in to pull a bold building permit, it's Scott Lozlo, the general contractor, it's Lozlo's Cafe, the business. I'm not here as a counselor, so I can reflect on what Counselor Dow was talking about. As businessmen, we serve as a council, but we don't lose our right as a citizen or a business person. So going forward, the question in front of us is one question. The second question is, and this is why I'm in favor of amending it, whether an employee whether an employee wants to look at me as a counselor because I'm on the council. I'm only a counselor when I'm in the chamber. By right, I'm not a counselor when I just walk around town. I mean, if they want to call me as a, and, you know, I don't do that. I think that we kind of have to look at ourselves as what role we're playing when we're doing our job. When I'm setting up a foundation, the last thing I'm thinking about, nobody calls me counselor. They call me Scott because they know that I'm the contractor installing a foundation. And when I'm down in my cafe, they come over and call me Scott. And I think that, I know there's a fine line because who you are is who you are. But I think in this instance, you know, this being on the agenda with that, I think is wrong. I think Counselor Dow has to stand as a citizen in this situation.
Thank you. Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion? All right, I will make note on this. The reason why, and I was going to explain this earlier, the reason why we're up here at this point in time discussing any type of hiring of an investigator is the fact that Counselor Dow is in fact a counselor. If it was anybody else, unless it was the town manager, we would not be addressing that here at the dais. That'd be up to the town manager and the other, and the HR department. Due to the fact that Mr. Dow, Counselor Dow, is a counselor, is the reason why we're up here. We wouldn't have this discussion any other way. Second of all, via the police report, TNG Liquor Board, along with their letter of support, and when you call the ethics lawyer, they will always consider that, any type of perception, in fact, a counselor. Doesn't matter if they call me Dave or anything like that. They will call, they know the fact that I am a counselor of this town. And that is the reason why it's brought up here and that wording is brought forward. And that was also through legal counsel's recommendation. Counselor Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm inclined to agree with you because of the fact that we are, we all ran for this office. Yes, we all do wear multiple hats in this community in many cases. As most, as almost everybody knows, I'm also a reporter and sometimes I will cover stuff in the town. But I try to avoid as much as possible crossing, crossing the boundaries between what I know I'm doing as a counselor and what I'm covering. And it's a, it's a situation where, as Counselor Lazlo mentioned, it is a fine line and it has to be. In some cases, it would be. It's understandable. But I think that there are certain things when we are in here in Town Hall. I think the staff in Town Hall, by and large, reacts to us as though we are counselors.
Thank you.
And they have to, and it actually makes it doubly hard for them because of the double, the double hats that many of us wear. And they know it and we know it and we have to be super careful of how we do things in this community and especially in Town Hall and in town facilities. I mean, it's a little bit different if you're walking through, you know, Big Bunny or Big Y and somebody comes up to you and starts asking questions. They're doing it because you're a counselor.
Okay.
In many cases. So I think that that's one of those things that, and also the charter very specifically states that we have to be very careful about that for a whole slew of reasons, and it makes sense that we would.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Lazlo?
In the previous speaker, my fellow colleague, you're a reporter for Southbridge News, but you're a reporter, Steves. You're not Counselor Steves as a reporter because that would be a direct conflict of reporting the news of the council. So for myself, I've always looked at, I've separated that, you as the reporter or you as the person on the council. So for myself, I consistently, when I go and get a sticker on a vehicle, I don't go see the counselor. I go see the garage with a name on it. So although legal counsel, I can get you any ruling, say anything you want, okay? That's just the way it works. And in this case here, I just disagree with the ruling. That's all. Thank you.
Very well. Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion? We're not going to go back and forth. We understand that. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. I was a business owner before I was counsel. And I have a lot of paper and license to renew in this town. And I used to come with tax, with paper, with a lot of business I got to do. It's not like I become businessman after I came up as a council. So I still have a right as a residence and taxpayer in this town. Now, if they want to look at it a different way.
Very well.
That's their problem. If that the case, we're gonna, I'm not going to go back and forth. I just want to mention some. So as an employee of the town, she can separate herself too from Liquor Board Asian Secretary and Town Manager Secretary because it was two different matter there.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other discussion from the counselors? Are any discussion at all? All right, so what the amendment on the table is to strike Counselor-at-large. I would recommend placing Joseph Dow or Joseph in there as well. But the motion right now is to count, is to strike Counselor-at-large. That's the amendment. All right, all those in favor of the amendment? Raise your hand. Hold it count, I can't count. Two, four, three, four. All those opposed? All right, so we have a four to three. The amendment passes. I go back to amended motion at this point in time. Vote to instruct and authorize, this is what it should read. Vote and authorize the town manager in cooperation with the town council to retain the services of an independent investigator to investigate the facts and circumstances of an incident taking place at the Town Hall on November thirty of twenty twenty-two between Joseph Dow and town staff to report of the, to report the conclusion of the investigation to the town council on prompt basis. All right, that's where, now we're going to discussion. I want to read a few things before we move on. All right, based on legal advice from the state, I'm sorry, from, from our town council. And this is, I will quote. I have, I have been advised, and this is a, this is an email to both Counselor Daniel and to the town manager. I have been advised, each of you, I have advised both of you that the town has a legal responsibility to provide all employees with a safe workplace free of any sort of harassment. Okay, one of the immediate things that takes place on harassment of any type, any type of claim. It's an immediate reaction by the leadership to mitigate the circumstances right there, usually within the first day or two. That has been taken place by the town manager. I've also advised you that on the basis of information received, that the town has mandatory, mandatory legal requirement to make an investigation into the facts to determine what exactly happened. I have further advised that because of the subject of the complaint is an elected counselor, that it is the responsibility of the town council to initiate the investigation and to act in any recommendations. I do want to make note that any, within the employees, Southbridge employee personal rules and regulations, this also suffices, both federally, the state, and our local rules and regulations for personnel within our town. Based on our charter, rules and regulations, and confirmed by our legal council, we as a town council have no authority to take any disciplinary action, regardless of what the independent investigation finds or does not. Again, we do not have the authority as a town council. Again, it's not in our charter, rules or regulations. So at that point in time, I want to give you kind of a little timeline of what transpired between, I'll say Counselor Dow and Mr. Dow. November thirty of twenty twenty-two, an incident occurred. Police report was submitted. December first, twenty twenty-two, formal complaint was made by the staff member itself. December sixth and seventh, email conversation between Counselor Daniel, myself and the TM on TNG question as they had asked for information on what was happening. And we also had a conversation on, with the town manager on elected officials and the authority of the town manager at that point in time. December eight, discussing personal, what was to be done to take immediate action. December ninth, TNG article was published. December thirteenth, based on town council, legal council, letter from TM to Counselor Dow was submitted to Counselor Dow to stay out of the TM office and correspond directly with the town manager. December fifteenth, Counselor Daniel, as the town council chair, provided a letter to Counselor Dow about executive session that was back on, I believe, on December fourteenth that we're going to have, that would be held. I'm sorry, December nineteenth, it would be held. After our scheduled town council meeting, December sixteenth, Counselor Daniel was notified that Counselor Dow had retained legal services. Mr. Tinsley, who is present today, asked for a delay due to Counselor Dow having a personal item to take care of and that Counselor Dow is requesting an open session, vice, an executive session. After seeking advice from legal council and the state ethics department, Counselor Daniel asked me to take over this matter at this point in time. I just want to remind all the counselors and anybody that wants to speak up here today. Treat everybody with dignity and respect up here. And we are not litigating the circumstances. We are here to vote on an independent investigator. Counselor Dow?
May I read my statement as a residence?
Just a reminder.
The way you guys told me, at the citizen forum, you're going to allow me to speak now.
If it starts going into litigation that he said, she said, or whatever it may be, well, I won't tolerate it.
Okay, I'm not, I'm just reading what happened that day.
No, no, no. So this is the thing. This is what the investigator's for. That, that's why we worded the way we did, so they can be it. We are not subject matter experts on investigating up here. Neither is anybody out, out there. That's why we want to hire them on.
But you don't think the citizen, the one, they should know exactly what happened with me at that day? Or I should, I should be able to respond back what was posted in the newspaper about me?
Counselor Dow, the purpose behind this agenda item is for an independent investigator to find the conclusion and then that will, that report will be submitted straight to the town council.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is important. It's a legal matter. Mr. Dow should probably not be up here at the dais speaking on this matter. If he's recused himself, he should be off.
Can you tell you who you are?
Denise Clements, former town counselor and just saying, I've got some legal people talking to me too, telling me a few things, but I'm just saying, Mr. Dow, for your protection, you really should not be speaking up here at the dais while this agenda item is on if you've recused yourself. If you've not recused yourself and you want to be in potential violation of a violation.
Okay, so we're addressing me. Ms. Clements, I completely understand and respect what you're saying. That was one of the questions that I did ask legal counsel. We cannot make him recuse himself or anything like that. He has a right.
I understand that. I'm just.
Thank you.
It'd be my opinion that he should recuse himself and not speak from the dais on this matter. He could speak wherever he chooses to, but not from the dais. It gives, look as though he is deliberating with you as council members.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Steves.
Um, yeah, just a couple, a quick question. First of all, you mentioned that the charter and our rules and regs say that they don't give us any authority to discipline. However, is there anything in state law that does? I have no clue. That's why I'm asking.
No, not as far as us is concerned, Counselor Steves?
As in a board disciplining its own members, is there anything in state law that allows that?
I do not believe so. I have already talked to the legal counsel about that at that point in time, so.
And they didn't say anything about that. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Lazlo?
First of all, I really respect you reciting the charter and stuff. It's correct in doing that. I understand we're not personnel, we don't handle personnel. We don't have anything to do with any of that. Matter of fact, it's all in the manager's realm. And I think that we have a very, we have now an HR department that I thought should have handled this. But I don't understand how this gets where it is. We are running an investigation through the Telegram Gazette. I mean, the way it unraveled, the public is wanting to know, and I know that you want to have this investigation. And we talk about the rights, rights of employees, rights of employees all the time. Nothing about how the employees treat the public in certain situations. And then when you say anything to the manager, it's personnel. It's not your business, okay? We back off and we don't say anything. I think I'm going to be voting in fair, I hate wasting taxpayers' money because that's what I think this is here due to the lack of management from the manager's office. So for myself, I think moving forward, I am going to vote for it. And I want the, the legal, the legal action taken by both sides to come up with an answer. But I can tell you this, the he said, she said, I'm not a big fan of it either. And, but this here is absolutely ridiculous and we're wasting money. That's all I have to say about it. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Appreciate it. I just want to go back and I'll, I'll, I'll give you a four for a second there, Counselor Dow. Just, just a reminder, we do have an HR department. Again, the HR department, if I'm not mistaken, was, could be considered a witness on what, what happened that day because they were there. So that, they should automatically be removed from any type of investigation. Second of all, this, and the town manager was also a possible witness to what took place that day. So again, that individual should be removed. As far as the reason why we're up here again is because it is a town counselor that this complaint was made and that's it. Again, we would never address it. We would always leave it up to the town manager and we would leave it up to the HR department unless they're witnesses to do that in type of investigation. I will state, I've done many investigations in my past career and this happens all the time. I'm not going to say it's right. I'm not going to say it's wrong, but it is part of the program, unfortunately, that we have to take forward and it's never pretty. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, Vice Chair, whoever. I support the investigation and I want my fellow counselor to support it too. That's all the thing I'm saying. I'm staying still here because technically, there's nothing against me right now. They can, they can say whatever they want. They can, whatever, whatever. I'm still elected to present, a citizen of South Bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. Counselor Montigny?
Thank you. Don't agree with this. If Counselor Dow would like it to, to be investigated, I do support that. But this really isn't right, I think, for us to be meddling in this. But I just, this, this police report seems incomplete to me and it's hard for me to make an educated decision. I can hear what the previous speaker wants, but I don't see anywhere in this police report about the police or 911 being called. It seems to end. I'm not going to really get into reading it. Believe counsel was angry and then, then started locking the doors. It seems like there's a giant chunk missing and there's no interaction with police in this report at all. And I'm curious to where the 911 log is and how the police got involved because it doesn't say here.
Yep, so thank you, counsel. Great questions. But again, the investigator will go ahead and do that, the team we hire. Absolutely. Again, it is not individuals up here saying, let's do this. It's a mandatory investigation by federal and state law and also our own employees' personal rules that we just voted on back in June of twenty twenty-one. So, and it had been updated on July first of twenty twenty-one. So trying to answer your question best I can, then, counsel. And as far as the police report is concerned, it's just, it is a police report. It's a log of what transpired by that individual. That's it.
By which individual?
The staff member.
Okay, this is not what the police, because there's nothing here about the police even coming here. Well, I mean, at the very beginning, it says twelve forty-eight. Sure, they, they came. They were dispatched. That's it. It just says they were dispatched. It doesn't even say anything about them being here, how they were dispatched.
Counselor allowed it, they're allowed to make, take a statement. They are, right? So I can't answer any other things besides that, actually, just what I just stated right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Any other discussion? Oh, Counselor Lazlo?
Just, just, usually if there's a criminal act or something that was a wrong, done to a fellow human being on the street, in a building, in a town hall, that the police would investigate the wrongdoing, that there would be an investigation by an officer, a detective. I, I, I agree that the police reports incomplete. It's almost like you sit there and say, why is it incomplete? Usually when there's an assault, whether it's verbally, physically, you call the police and the police handle it, not the Telegram Gazette. So as I, as me sitting here as a citizen, as a council, whatever you want to call me, businessman, I sit there and I look at it and I start trying to figure out and add up, why is this not handled by a detective in a police department and it's handled by the Telegram Gazette? And then obviously, the facts come out that the staff member called. And then obviously, the facts come out that the staff member called, called Telegram Gazette, that's what she wanted. So this really smells terrible, and I look at a citizen trying to do business, this is one of the things that I've had a very hard time with in town hall. Citizens were, people work in this building to service the citizens of Southbridge, and we've run into some people that are no longer here.
Counsel Lozlo, I respect what you're saying, but again, we're going back off the agenda just a little bit.
I'm not on the agenda, I'm talking about process and procedure and behavior of this investigation. It's totally in order. I'm not, I'm not debating, I'm not speaking out of school, I'm just saying, we have people misbehaving, and police don't investigate it. I just, I don't get it. I'll let it go at that, thank you.
And we will, hopefully, when we talk to the investigator, to have some questions for them to try to answer for us. Thank you.
But Counselor, my thing is this, the taxpayers pay police to do their job, now we have to pay the lawyer to do their job. We're double dipping, we're double paying, and I have a problem with it, but if that's what it calls for, we'll find out. We'll see where the cards land. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, if we're going to go around in circles, I'll allow the other town counselors that haven't asked any questions to ask those questions first. Very well, Counselor. Counselor, all right, but again, if we're going around in circles, I'd rather move this along.
I just wanted to say that I can understand what Counsel Lozlo is saying, however, I think the whole point of doing an investigation is because of the fact that with, under the circumstances, you're having police investigating fellow employees of the town of Southbridge, whether they be counselors or staff, and that creates an inherent conflict of interest. I mean, that's why I think the whole point of doing an independent investigation actually makes sense, so we can find out what the truth actually is. I'm not saying that the police don't try to do a good job, because I think they do, but I think it's just an inherent conflict in this situation that we would, we should try to avoid if we can.
Thank you, Counselor.
If I may comment, Mr. Chairman, a quick comment.
Go ahead, Counsel Lozlo.
If, there is no conflict when someone breaks the law. Anybody breaks the law, the police are in charge, they run the investigation. There is no conflict if a police officer runs an investigation on a counselor, a president, a town manager. That's all I want you to know, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion on this? I will make note, just a reminder, this is a harassment claim, a harassment claim, and that is why you're hiring or recommending hiring a third-party investigator. As leaders, we should be as unbiased as we possibly can, and allow the professionals do their bidding or their jobs, and then report back to the town council, where at that point in time, I will have a conversation with our town council, legal council, on what the next steps will be when we receive that report. All right, no further discussion? All those, actually, I'm going to do a roll call vote.
Roll call.
Thank you. All right, so the motion on the table, oh, the cow. All right. Roll call vote on the amended motion. I guess, I'm, that's right, I'm the clerk too, so. I'm doing three jobs. I'm the town clerk, I want to get paid by it. All right, let's do this.
Adam, I just want to understand, amended or on the agenda?
On the amend, amendment of Counselor. At large, we've removed that. That already passed. So basically, it's saying between Joseph Dow and town staff.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Counsel Adams, yes. Counsel Daniel.
Recused.
Recused. Counsel Dow.
Yes.
Counsel Lozlo.
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti.
Yes.
Counsel Montigny.
Yes.
Counsel Rivas.
Yes.
Counsel Steves.
Yes.
Two, three, four, five, six, seven, all right. Seven, seven in favor. Mr. Chair, you can have this back.
Thank you. If you want it. Agenda item 14, pursuant to the Southbridge Home Room Charter, Chapter 4, Section 1-2, vote to confirm the town council chairperson's appointments of Terry Colignesi, Pete Canoyer, and Evelyn Velez to the Town Manager Search Committee.
Second.
We have a motion by Counsel Steves, a second by Counsel Rivas. I believe you have the background information that was distributed this morning by email. I feel that these three citizens are well-qualified to be on the search committee. They have experience being advocates for the town of Southbridge, they have human resources experience, have other, they have other experiences within the town as well. I think they're well-qualified. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just hope that this committee can at least take a look at some of the candidates that the last search committee looked at. We spent a lot of money on that search, they came forward with several names, and I thought some of the other ones that were on that list were highly qualified as well. So I would, I would ask that they at least take a look at some of the other candidates for the town manager's position. That's all, thank you.
Very good, Counsel Lozlo.
I, I'm not disagreeing with the previous speaker, what I'm going to say is that I sat chairman of a town manager's search when we picked Florence Chandler, longest-standing manager. The process is you have to advertise the position. The people that apply are the ones you are going to be dealing with. If the former, or people that were in the search prior, which, when Mr. McCall was chosen, if they would like to reapply, they would have to reapply. It's not ethically correct for the bill, I mean, for the search committee to go out and just go ask a member that came in, say, second or third in the last search. So I think moving forward, I understand what you're saying, I agree with, if those candidates wanted to reapply under the new search, they would be totally welcome. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Steves.
I just wanted, it's slightly, slightly off top of the immediate topic, but I just wanted to make sure that when we do go through this process, when it finally comes up to us to make the final choices, I want to make sure that we, as a council, do not vote on our choice that night, that we have some time to do some homework and think about it, and, because we have in the past had issues like that, and we have had, we have seen town managers, this is not, Mr. McCall is not one of them, fortunately, but we have had in the past had town managers that quite frankly proved not to be a good fit for our community, but that were voted pretty much that night, and we need to take the time to really think about and study the people that we have interviewed on that, on that night when we get to that point. It's a little early for that at this point, but I just wanted to bring that up now.
Thank you. Counsel Lozlo.
On a quick note, I think we're premature, but I think that when we send it to the committee, I think that we have to make it known how many candidates we want coming back to us. There were some things like that that we'll work on, like if there's three of your top candidates, and depending on how many apply and what happens with, I mean, there's a lot of things that I think the chairman at the time will, will interject those fundamentals. Thank you.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. Were we able to vote later on hiring the specific firm, correct? This council will choose that and vote on the firm that will be used at the search committee, or if they use a firm?
That's done by the search committee.
They vote, but don't we have to, like, sign to pay and contracts?
We, the charter states that the search committee chooses whether or not they wish to have a search firm coming in to help them out. The charter also says that should they choose to have a committee, a firm come in to help them out, then we shall appropriate funds sufficient for them to go through the process.
Okay, well then, I'd like to pass on my opinion and advise them to please do not hire Lynch. And I'm sorry if I didn't hear, did you announce the other members of the committee or just the citizen members?
At this point, just the citizen members.
Okay, do you know when we'll be getting a formal announcement of everybody that's on, or?
In about a minute.
Oh, great, thanks, I appreciate it.
Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out that according to the town charter, it's completely up to the committee, it's their sole discretion if they want to engage a professional firm, or if they even want to advertise for the position. It's completely up to their discretion on what they want to do. So, all I'm asking is, in the interest of saving time, since we already went through this just a short time ago, that we at least take a look at some of the, the ones that were suggested the last time we hired a search committee, that's all. And I don't have any problem if they want to look locally too, but that's all, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? I have chosen to appoint Vice Chair Adams as chair of the search committee and Counsel Rivas as the other council member of the committee. Item number 15, vote to approve a transfer for $463 from account number 094000000-574000-0297 Insurance Premiums IOD to number 09400000-574000-0300 Insurance Premiums School to cover the cost for additional equipment premiums for fiscal year 2023. Sub moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Steves, second by Counsel Dow, Counsel Steves.
We recommended that unanimously. It was, I gotta admit, the discussion was a little bit confusing, because we weren't quite, quite sure what it was actually going for. It's apparently associated with one of the vehicles that the school is, has, that we are, we're not clear if it's a brand-new vehicle or if it's something that's just being added to the insurance policy. Can you, can you clarify that, Mr. McCall?
Counsel, I'm sorry, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Counsel Steves. We did look into this, and what it appears, this was a replacement vehicle that they purchased, and apparently, we keep, at least on the town side, presumably on the school side, you keep a fleet list that you submit to the insurance company, and it did not make it at the time it was replaced, so they caught that and they're adding it to, back onto the list.
Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 16, vote to approve amendment to standard operating procedure number 15, capital expenditure policy. Capital expenditure defined, original language reading, any items or goods of $10,000 or more, and with an intended useful life of three years or more, regardless of funding source. The amendment would be any items or goods of $10,000 or more with an intended useful life of five years or more, regardless of funding source.
Mr. Chairman, I would actually like to move to postpone this, because at GenGov, when we were talking about it, we had agreed to sit down and postpone it to see what the capital planning committee actually does, and to see specifically if Karen Harnoys sees other necessary changes to the capital definitions, before we bring it up as a final vote up here at the council. And when I was, I admit, when I was talking to Hannah about the agenda, and I had mentioned that I, that we had approved it, I didn't have my notes in front of me, so I had forgotten that we had voted to postpone this one.
We have a motion to postpone by Counsel Steves, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Marquetti. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Counsel Steves, no mind. You guys voted to postpone it at the general gov?
At GenGov, yeah, because we intended to continue discussion on it, and Counsel Marquetti was there, so he was part of the discussion.
So.
It was just, it was an oversight on my part when I was second to Hannah.
Thank you. So, I have, thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? So when would you like to postpone?
We were going to discuss it back at GenGov, and then, and then vote down there to send it back up here.
So you wish to be, rather than postpone, you rather refer it back to subcommittee?
We could do it that way, that probably makes sense, yeah, so let's do it that way.
All right, we have a motion to refer to subcommittee, and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of referring back to subcommittee? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? The motion is referred back to subcommittee.
I do, I just want to clarify, we aren't necessarily opposed to the proposed change, we just wanted to see if there was more information coming forward.
Very good. Item number 17, vote to approve the application for no-cost speed feedback and school zone speed limit signs through MastiOT's Safe Roots to school program, and to authorize the town manager to sign all related documents. Sub moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Steves, second by Counsel Marquetti. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This was voted in favor at the DPW Subcommittee meeting by a four-to-zero vote.
Any discussion?
This involves those, you've seen those signs, I've seen them in Sturbridge, oh, Ms. Dean is here, so she could speak to it, but they're to try and help slow people down. I think they, they have what your speed limit is, and they'll flash at you. Hopefully, we can get these situated so there's nothing distracting it. I noticed some of the blinking crosswalk signs downtown, you, it's hard to see them. In fact, there's flags in front of them, so, so, thank you.
Ms. Dean, this is going to be at Charlton Street?
Correct. I didn't include it in the motion, because, Lord forbid, for some reason, we were told Charlton wasn't the right fit. I didn't want to bring it to the town council and then be bound to that. We're allowed to have one set of the lights for one school, and so the first choice, according to the chief, is for the Charlton Street to replace the existing. We are, however, asking for three instead of two, to replace the three that are there.
Okay, so that's up in the air then, about having a third sign, because there are three streets.
Correct.
All right. Counsel Steves.
Just a clarification, weren't we talking at the subcommittee as Eastford Road?
If I may, through you, Chair.
I thought it was, but maybe I'm wrong.
If I may, through you, Chair. That's interesting that you brought it up, actually, when I initially emailed off to Dr. Valar, the chief, and the DPW, I had suggested Eastford Road, but after consulting with them, the question was actually more to whether West Street or Charlton Street were more of a priority. The police chief felt like Charlton Street was more important, because they've had incidents in previous years, that this could hopefully help address.
Okay, and to follow up with that, so how are these signs going to actually be powered? Because I've seen some of the, some of the speed, the speed warning signs that the police have had up, and they are very frequently off because of, because their solar batteries run out, and they have to, have to be recharged or whatever, I don't know exactly, but you always see those little low battery thing in the corner on a regular basis, so.
That's a good, if I may, through you, Chair, that's a good technicality that, to look into in advance, these are strictly solar-powered. I don't know if it's a battery, or if it's just a, you know, how it actually, the solar works. I wonder if the technology is constantly improving to the fact, or to the degree that hopefully these will run better, but that's one of the other concerns I had by bounding, binding us to Charlton. Lord forbid there isn't enough sun, then we wouldn't have working signs there, we may for that reason want to consider a different location.
Okay. Counsel? Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 18, vote to approve the proposed job description for the construction inspector position. Sub moved.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Adams, second by Counsel Steves. Counsel Dow, I'm sorry. Motion, second by Counsel Dow. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We brought this to the DPW Subcommittee meeting, and it was unanimously approved at the Subcommittee meeting, four-to-zero vote, to add, to change that original, we had an original job that was an assistant engineer, and we changed it to construction inspector position, and I wanted to thank Adriana for working on the language on that, she did a really pretty good job on it. I would also ask that if this is voted, voted in favor of tonight, I would ask that the position be posted tomorrow. Thank you.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to thank the DPW Subcommittee, Town Manager, HR for getting this through. I want to thank Phil for reviewing it, as he's in the acting stages of every position in that general area over there. I'm glad the Subcommittee brought this back, redeveloped it, it went through the Subcommittee, that way we're not saying we didn't know what was in it, but we, when we voted for it and all that kind of stuff. I just want to move this along. Again, this is a restructuring, in a sense, of our DPW hierarchy, and then we can move on from there for the other positions, but I think this is a good move for the town itself and the DPW side, so, thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. Would this be, I, I'm sorry if you already said this, but will this erase the other position that we are trying to, in a sense, amend? Three to the manager, maybe? Is this? Three to the manager, maybe? Is this the other, the other position that was brought up and failed over the summer? I realize that this is the, are we going to have two positions available now? The construction inspector and then that other thing that I thought this was to replace that position and only have one? Just looks for clarification is all.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I believe that Counsel Marketti wanted the other position changed. That's my understanding. This is not something that I advanced. I believe Counsel Marketti wanted to amend the other position because, Counsel Marketti can probably interject, but we started looking at whether or not we wanted to experiment with having outside engineering on an on-call. And we nominated four firms. So at that point in time, I think it rendered having an assistant town engineer moot if we weren't going to fill that position immediately. So in response to that, I believe the discussion started to change that position to address more of the oversight.
No, I appreciate that. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that when we vote tonight, if it passes with a yes vote, that this transforms that old position into the construction inspector and that there's not just two positions floating around now. I just, I'm just looking for clarity. I totally support this. I just.
Just as a follow-up, I think we only created one position last spring in the budget, which was for the assistant to the town engineer or town engineer assistant. So, you know, for clarity purposes, maybe you want to add that into any motion that you make that this replaces the title of that other position.
I would make that motion. But why don't we let other people discuss first?
Counsel Steve, then Counsel Lozo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To clarify, yeah, I basically, I think I'm on the same page with what the manager was just saying. During the course of our discussion, the whole point was that this would replace that engineering assistant and that Adriana is in the process of doing some research into some of the functions that we took out of that job, specifically the MS4 and the NIPD's kind of stuff that deals with stormwater and enforcing our stormwater regulations. And it's planning and coming back with a proposal to do something that will actually address that separately. But it will not be an engineer per se. We don't know, we don't quite know yet what it's going to look like. I mean, I've done a little bit of, little bit of looking online about some of the proposed jobs that other towns have that do that. And she's looking at that kind of stuff, too. And I sent her one. And it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't require an engineer. And it's that, it doesn't have that kind of complexity, but it, it would end up being an awful lot of work. So it might, it would require somebody who knows a lot about stuff and a variety of stuff, but it may not necessarily be an engineer per se. It's an issue of, I know that this is an issue where we're starting to see to some degree of, you know, staff inflation. But this is a situation where we need to have somebody doing that part of the job and nobody's doing it now. But that has, that really has nothing to do with this particular job. This job is pretty much what you were just thinking it is, at least as I understand it.
Counsel Lozo.
This job here was the original idea we came up with for oversight and accountability of the Main Street project, the parking lot issues in Central Street, whether it be South Street inspections or West Street inspections. And we wanted an inspector. And then this went to general government, came out as an engineer. When it was at DPW, it was an inspector. We're back to square one. We're getting a position of oversight and accountability as an inspector. Now, there's discussion about other things in DPW. There is no other position. This is that position. Now, going forward, I know we've had in-depth discussions on municipal buildings and the concept. I mean, I know I've had a conversation with Counsel Adams about it, that we have to embark on maybe looking at the consolidation again or the monitoring of the catch basins. Where those duties lie or where those things go have to be discussed in the future. But right now, what's in front of us is the position of accountability and oversight on the construction sites when the holes are open, making sure compaction's done correctly, making sure the pipes are installed correctly, and just making sure that construction processes are done as per spec. That's what this position is. And I am totally in favor of this. This was the original idea. And I think Phil, again, good job. HR and everybody else that had entered this stringed out a problem that went awry. Thank you.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's exactly right. We need a construction inspector. We need somebody to oversee a lot of the projects in town. And we've also spent a lot of money on having third-party engineering firms doing our oversight. And I don't really feel it, well, I'll just say that I don't think they're doing the best job that we could be done looking out for the town. So it's important to have a DPW construction inspector looking at all the jobs in town, make sure trenches are done right, roads are filled right, pipes are done right. So, yeah, so I'm going to vote for this, too. I don't have a problem if Counsel Montigny wants to make, make sure that that other position is replaced. I don't have a problem with that. The other, one more thing, I would just like to repeat that I would like this, I'm not instructing the town manager to do anything. I'm just asking that this go on. On the, up for, on the job posting tomorrow, I would like to see someone by the next Town Council meeting. I'm not forcing you to do that. I'm just asking that you do that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Manager and then Counsel Rivas.
Just, we'll see what we can do. My HR department, one is out of the office and the other one has a family emergency. So we'll see what we can do. Charter also does require that the director of the DPW select the members of the department to make a recommendation. So that will have to take place somehow.
Are you hiring someone? I thought, somebody said you hired somebody. DPW director?
Not yet.
Counsel Rivas, then Counsel Lozo.
So I see the schedule here for the compensation, but does this save us money from the previous position that we had? I couldn't figure that out from this information.
Can we, can we save that for the next item?
Sure.
Thank you. Counsel Lozo.
We have a DPW director. He's acting, but he's a director. Get it done. Advertise it properly, equal opportunity, the whole nine yards. If that guy out there and the head of our DPW can't handle it, we don't have anybody that can handle it. I've never seen a DPW run so smooth. Those ice storms and the things we're tackling, Gulfwood Road, next morning, six o'clock, Rotary bed. I mean, it's amazing. Give the kudos wherever they belong. But I got to tell you something. Somebody woke up at DPW and turned the lights on. It's outstanding. This is the best I've seen it in years. So moving forward, if we have well-qualified acting and we have Phil, make the call and let's get this thing done. We need to hit the springtime. When all the stuff starts, we need somebody in place. Thank you.
Counsel.
One comment. I do agree with Counselor Montigny, but it shouldn't be tied to this motion to eliminate that other position. I just, you might want a substitute motion or something. Saying that, so there's no gray area. Thank you.
Counsel Steve.
I just wanted to clarify, given the way our charter is structured and the fact that the town manager is ultimately in control of all of the departments, wouldn't that mean that he, that in the absence of an existing DPW director, the right to hire would default to the manager by definition? I would think legally, common sense says that that would happen, wouldn't it?
I, I don't know. I'd have to.
I said by default, by default, if in the absence of an actual DPW director, since the manager is ultimately the guy in charge of the town and all hiring, the hiring would default to the manager by definition. This is common sense, isn't it?
With the director.
If there is no, if there is no, technically, there is no director. I mean, we have, we do have an acting at the moment, that's true. We do have an interim, but.
We have an interim. Counsel Montigny.
Thank you. Doesn't it say somewhere in the charter that the town manager is in charge of the DPW, like technically?
I would think so.
I, but again, to your point, we have a acting director. So I think, you know, doesn't need to stall any longer? Just my two cents there. Thanks.
All right. We're starting to, we're starting to get off a little bit here. All we're doing is we're voting to approve the job description for the construction inspector position. Any further discussion on that agenda item? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 19: Vote to approve the addition of the construction inspector position to salary Schedule I, Grade PT 7.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Lozo. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This actually did not come to the Subcommittee and I asked, I asked that if this could be sent right up to the Town Council.
Oh, very good. Okay. Discussion. Counsel Steve.
I think Counsel Rivas had a question at the last.
Sorry. Counsel Rivas, then.
I guess I have the same question about whether this saves us money from the previous Anyone?
Mr. Manager, are you able to address that?
It's replacing. Looking at the older job description to see if it gave classification. See, Mr. Harding is going to come to my rescue.
Through you, Chair. Counsel Rivas, same exact pay schedule as what it was before. So it's no save, no difference. It's all the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. All set? Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 20: Vote to approve award of Timber Harvest 1 to Anderson Timber to pay $27,388 for the purchase of timber with favorable recommendation from North Quavon Forestry and authorize the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Lozo. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The DPW Subcommittee voted unanimously to send this up to the Town Council for approval. I did also ask a question about a, something that was in the contract concerning a grant. The town manager thought he might answer that. All right.
Thank you. You brought this to Greg Warff, a vacation, to answer that question.
Good evening, everybody. I apologize for not making Subcommittee last week. I was away with the family and we landed two hours ago and here I am. So my wife's not happy, but that's okay. To answer your question, Counsel, we did receive a grant from DCR to cover half the costs of the forestry plan that North Quavon did conduct for us. So he has done the forest management plan, which is what we're starting to act on now with these individual cuts. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me because I did not, obviously, go to the office today, but it was in around $14,000 we received from DCR to cover half of Quavon's original fee to set up the management plan. And then what you see in front of you tonight is the money that we will be receiving for the sale of our timber to Anderson Forestry Services. This would be the first of, between 10 and 20 harvestings we do over the next 10-year cycle of this management plan.
Thank you.
Counsel Steve.
Just a quick clarification. Shouldn't we technically have a vote to accept that grant money? As I said, shouldn't we technically have a vote to accept that grant money at the council level if we're getting $14,000 or whatever it was?
We accepted it months ago and went directly back into the Water General Fund.
Because I knew we were, I knew we were doing it, but I don't know, I didn't know we had actually gotten the money. So.
Yeah, that was something that the forester did for us as part of his contract. He went to DCR and got the funds for us. We received the check and it went to Ms. Harneis' office where it got deposited into the Water General Fund. So, yeah, we never actually voted to receive it, but we did receive it. And I suppose that's the most important thing.
Well, yeah. Just for clarification, so everyone knows where the money is. Okay, good.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I think the original motion, when Heather was DPW director, was to accept them as the Forest Management Company. And they would, part of the proposals, it said in the language that they would be getting us a grant. So maybe that.
That was part of North Quavon's contract, to get that grant for us.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 21: Vote to enter into a no-cost service agreement for installation of a new power meter at the RMV for the purposes of installing electric vehicle charging stations and authorize the town manager to sign related documents.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Lozo, second by Counsel Adams. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is voted four-to-zero, unanimous in favor of bringing it up to the Town Council.
Very good. Would you like to address?
If you'll have me. This is a contract for the town, forgive me, for the, for the town to enter into contract with National Grid to install a new service and meter at the RMV for the purpose of installing electrical, electric vehicle charging stations. When we had originally gone to you and you had recommended the RMV as a location for charging stations in the future through the EV IP program, when we did a study of the electrical system at the RMV, we found that both panels there were completely full and we would have to put in a new service. So this is where we landed now. There's no cost to the town at this point in time. And, you know, we will be moving forward with the EV IP program after this. And of course, obviously, should we get that grant, we'll bring that forward to you guys as well. And the charging stations we're proposing will pay for the electric costs or the cost of the electricity.
Very good. Any questions? Counsel Steve.
I mean, I probably should have asked this at the Subcommittee meeting, but, so it mentions that this is a no-cost agreement. Is this, is this a no-cost agreement for inpreparatuity, as in National Grid will cover all of the costs of repairs and things like that? Or how does that work?
That I'm not 100% sure of. I believe that at this point in time, no, it's for the installation only.
Installation only? And roughly, how long would that take?
The installation?
Yeah.
Not long. I mean, we'd have to get onto their, into their system to, you know, accept the contract and then get into their system for them to come and install the service. So I don't know what their timeline looks like at this point in time.
Because I know they've been a little bit slow. Like, there's a, there's a phone pole that they're supposed to be installing, like, right across the street from us. It's been sitting there for like six months. Hopefully, it doesn't take that long.
Correct.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 22: Vote to approve the expression of interest for the fiscal year 24 Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness MVP Action Grant for a study to be conducted which coincides with the top priority action in the final report from Beals &amp; Thomas to evaluate the capacity of drainage infrastructure at roadways and improve the capacity, equipment, and resources of the municipal separate storm sewer system and authorize the town manager to sign related documents. Motion by Counsel Steve, second by Counsel Adams. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this was four-to-zero in favor of, to the Town Council. This is a culmination of all the hard work that Mr. Ramsey and the group has done to be able to apply for something like this at this point in time. So I just want to say thank you to you for organizing that. Town manager, I know Counsel Rivas and a few others participated in a lot of training and this is, again, culmination of almost like a crawl, walk, run process. Thank you.
Yeah, basically.
Any discussion? Counsel Steve.
Just to clarify, as you know, I was part of that MVP process. So when we were talking about bringing this forward as one of the major issues, among other things, we were talking about looking at places like the culverts that run under Main Street, that run under the Rotary, various other things that, that handle all kinds of issues that have been, you know, floating around for 100, 120 years and are often in terrible condition. So that's kind of to look at this kind of thing. Also, Eric, do you know, do you know what the, do we have any idea how much this is? Also, Eric, do you know what the, do we have any idea how much this is, how much we're likely to get for this? If this is an expression of interest, how much do they have available for these projects?
At this point in time, no, we don't know exactly how much they would allocate towards this. Again, it is an expression of interest that we will send to the state based upon our final report. This is our first action step that we'd like to take, is to conduct this. Just off the top of my head, going from reports that I've seen written in the past, I would estimate we'd be asking for somewhere between $40,000 and $70,000. Just a rough estimate.
Okay, because I know that there's so many, I remember when Heather was bringing up some of these concerns that we've had with the stormwater system, that there's a lot of places that I think we don't even really know where they are, in some weird locations, and there's lots of weird culverts and stuff that really need to be fixed, they may be completely messed up, and it may, the study will give us ideas of stuff that will probably cost millions, unfortunately.
I believe that is correct.
Yes.
Councilor Rivas.
Thank you for putting all of that process together. I learned a great deal even before I was a counselor. My question is, does this prevent us, and I know there were a lot of different projects that we talked about during that time that, you know, had varying degrees of importance, but in the future, does this prevent us from kind of pursuing other monies for some of those other projects on the list?
No, this would not prevent us from seeking further opportunities for funding for these projects outside of the MVP process, no.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 23, vote to approve entering into an agreement with either Childscapes or M.E. O'Brien &amp; Sons Incorporated for playground equipment and servicing at McCann Fields for up to $132,000 using Operation Services Division Contract FAC 104, funded with the Parkland Acquisitions and Renovations for Communities Grant, the park grant, and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilor Lazo, second by Councilor Dow. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This went through my subcommittee again, four to zero in favor of, and I'll let Ms. Dean speak on it if there's any discussion.
Ms. Dean.
I don't have a lot. I think that I've talked about this in previous meetings, about how this would be the golden standard for me, is to be able to go out for the larger playground equipment. We had the lower bid come in, thankfully, in our favor. We have extra funding available. We are now, we went out for a change order that removed the ADA swing, the single ADA swing, and is now upgrading that ADA swing to a universally accessible round swing that someone in a wheelchair could transition onto, or someone with sensory issues might enjoy laying on. We have the climbing structure. We're waiting for the two quotes to come in. The one that I would advocate for of the rope climbers is the landscape structures, which has a speed control. For those who remember playground days when the bully would try and swing you off the merry-go-round, this prevents that, so that allows for the universal accessibility to ensure that no one feels threatened by the speed, and it's good for strength building. It has, and it's group play, it's a great little structure. So we'll see which quote comes in and be able to go forward with either, if you can approve it today, the one or the other. And the reason we're asking you to do this premature of getting the final quotes is I'm not coming before you until the first meeting in February, and we want to get this order in as soon as we know what we're going for, because we want to get the playground equipment in in advance of Jam Corporation putting in the curbing and the fencing in front of it at the Henry Street there. We don't want this other outside work to compromise the work Jam's going to do, which wouldn't be covered under their project. And if we have additional funding, we have been asked by a citizen in town to please consider more universal access and other disabilities, and other differences. So what might not be considered a disability is sometimes, you know, someone who's deaf, or, you know, they have lots of other circumstances that, there are these very cool panels that you can put in for different reasons, different sensory, different stimulation, and so with the extra funding, it's very easy for us to order those panels after the fact. It's the big playground equipment that's a little harder. So we will hopefully be able to include a couple of those panels.
Councilor Steves.
I mean, just to clarify, so what's your timeframe for getting the quotes from either Childscapes or M.E. O'Brien?
If I may through you, Chair, my last communication from the, one of the quotes was that they were on holiday, and when they returned, they would be getting us the quote. So we should be getting the, you know, we hopefully will be getting a response this week to be able to go forward, but hopefully next week with ordering. The BSC group has been holding our hand through this process.
Councilor Rivas.
I just want to say I am really excited about having the universal design. I think that families with children with disabilities are going to be really excited for their kids to be using this playground. And my question is, are these photos on the, I forget your website, or?
Civil Space?
The Civil Space website?
They're not, that's a great suggestion. We'll make sure we get those up.
Yeah, I think people will be really excited to kind of see what's coming for Henry Street. I think that will be amazing for a lot of our families, so thank you for all that work.
You're welcome.
Councilor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I want to thank you, because you're thinking about all the children, not only Pacific, special need, handicapped, regulars. That's amazing, 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 amazing. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
If I may through you, Chair, we all have blind spots, and sometimes we, you know, in our eagerness to spend in certain ways, or to just try to fill a space, we often will, you know, not be as inclusive as we should be. It's thanks to citizens like this woman, Carla, who had reached out to me, who are advocating for people all the time. I encourage people to please continue to bring your needs to the town, whether it's the town council, through the town council, to the staff, to the staff. However you do it, we need your input.
Councilor Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was taking a look at the whole park grant funding program that the state has put together. And so just to get this straight, we've bonded for this entire McCann Field, Capillo Park, correct? And then, and then, once we completely pay for this whole thing, then we get the reimbursement? Is that how this works?
If I may through you, Chair, we have not bonded for it, but we have entered into legal contracts with the, oh, no, forgive me. Yes, you approved a resolution to go out for bonding for the, for the 75% portion that they will reimburse us for, and then we are covering the other, or 70, 30, and then we are covering the other 30%. I owe you, I apologize.
No, that's all right.
I told you that I was going to get you an update on the funding after the subcommittee meeting. As you saw, I had a lot of follow-ups, and so I did not get that one out. We have spent, I think I'd mentioned it in the meeting, we've spent the money on updating the basketball courts in 2019, 2020, the money for the playground 2020, the small playground for the zero, or toddler to five-year-olds, and all the other funds to be spent are for projects that you will see completed by the end of this fiscal year, so June 30 of 2020, 2023.
So then, once the projects are complete, then we will get reimbursed for the projects? So we have to finish the projects first, is that how this works?
We've already been reimbursed for design, so as, and of course, your finance director is excellent, she does a good job of making sure if there's money to come back to the town that we get it, especially in light of this is a year-over-year grant, and so you had design completed by last June. We went for the reimbursement prior to the closing of the books to be able to make sure, you know, you never want to have sort of outstanding reimbursements that, Lord forbid, you'd have to cover through short-term borrowing or something like that. So we made sure that we got those funds in prior to the close of the year, so you've already gotten back whatever, you know, 38.5 or whatever the difference was.
And then I also noticed that they advocate that applicants use more wood products, and especially, especially local wood products, but I don't see any wood products in this design. Is there any, is there any plans in the future to use more wood type of playground equipment?
I used, so of the many suggestions, if I may through you, Chair, forgive me. There are many suggestions, or any, many agendas that the different agencies have that they pack into the agreements or into the grants, and what we used for this playground equipment was that contract, the FAC, the Operation Services Division Contract, FAC 104. So, you know, another large agenda of the state is to save towns as much money as possible by going through this statewide contracting service. So rather than having to shop on our own, the state is shopping for all the executive offices, they now, as of the Municipal Modernization Act put through by Baker, are insisting that the towns also use that. That's a big benefit for us, so we don't have to do a lot of the homework. I could go right in there and then build a quote based on what they've already done. And so that didn't necessarily take into account wood, but if I was to provide you that FAC 104, or if you were to look it up, it does call out things for minority businesses, small businesses, it does have certain criteria it is following, so other agendas.
All right, thank you. I'm all set.
Good. Any other questions? Very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 24, vote to approve entering into an agreement with Charlton Fence to replace McCann Field's practice field fencing for $49,999, and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Dow, second by Councilor Adams. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, it's four to zero vote in favor of to the town council. I will state, if anybody's been down to that basketball area.
It's the baseball.
What is it?
It's the baseball practice field.
Baseball, okay, I'll get off that. My apologies. Wrong one. All right, I'll let Ms. Dean talk about this one. The only thing they did ask, I did receive a request from a resident today who wanted to make sure it was galvanized steel. Thank you.
Ms. Dean.
Yes, so we verified that the posts were the galvanized steel in the subcommittee meeting. I have not heard back directly from Charlton Fence, so if you'd like, you could make the motion contingent on that until I hear from them, by all means. And I know I said in the last agenda item, I shouldn't have to say much about this, so I don't want to carry on unnecessarily. It's the practice softball field. It's one of the many à la carte items we found inside the McCann master plan that needed addressing, and we initially had quotes come in far higher than the $50,000, and we kept working, again, thanks to BSC Group helping us, we kept working to try to find a quote for under $50,000 that still met our needs.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? I'm sorry. Councilor Dow.
Sorry about that.
I'm sorry.
Any warranty on the fence? How many months, how many years, any warranty?
Our standard warranties are for one year.
One year, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, very good. I'm sorry. Anyone else? Okay, very good, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 25, vote to approve change order number four to J.A.M. Corporation's contract for $4,867.27 funded by the CDBG fiscal year 21 grant, and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Councilor Dow, second by Councilor Steves. Councilor Adams.
Again, four to zero at the PND in favor of.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 26, vote to approve change order number one to extend the agreement with Ugal LLC for commercial rehab at 111 Central Street to January 31, 2023, and authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilor Dow, second by Councilor Adams. Councilor Adams.
Again, PND, four to zero in favor of.
Any discussion? Very well, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 27, vote to approve entering into an agreement with Ugal LLC to provide a 0% commercial improvement loan to install sprinklers at 111 Central Street, helping trigger the occupancy of its restaurant, using ARPA funds appropriated at town council meeting June 27, 2022, Agenda Item Number 46, and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Councilor Lazo, second by Councilor Dow. Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Great conversations were had that evening, as this being the first kind of ARPA funds, 0% loan. So it was a four to zero vote in favor of, and we look forward to seeing how this wraps up.
Councilor Steves.
Mr. Chairman, I think it might be a good idea if we actually put the amount that they're requesting, which is $85,600, into the agenda item. Again, we didn't have that, it wasn't brought up even at the subcommittee meeting, but it is in the paperwork, so I'd like to make that as a motion to amend, to include that sum.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to amend, and I didn't hear the?
Oh, it's $85,600, according to the paperwork.
And where are we putting that?
Oh.
I would put it in. Put an improvement loan in the amount of?
Yeah, exactly. Right.
$5,000?
Let's do it on again.
$85,600.
Yep.
$85,600, yes.
And if I can follow up with a question to peg on this, so do we have anybody else coming down the pike who's using some of the other funds that we've set aside for these loans?
If I may through your chair, we have not, we've had no more applications come in the door, but we are hopeful that there are some on their way, yes.
And we approved, what was it, $250,000 for that?
Yes, we did.
Council, I'm sorry, Councilor Marketti, and then Councilor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I don't have any problem with this grant or loan here. I believe it was Councilor Steves, though, that asked to see some sort of a contract, something telling us this is how much they're getting.
Right.
This is their monthly payments, something to that effect. I know we got something tonight in the email, but nothing was filled in, it was just all blanks.
That is true.
So if we could see some sort of contract, I'd appreciate it. Also, the town council voted for this to be made available to everyone in town, but now it looks like it's been changed to a qualified census tract, which is still a large area of the town, I have to say, but it's not the entire town. Was that some reason for that?
If I may through you, Chair, so to the agreement, my understanding was you wanted to see the shell of the service contract, so you can fill in the blanks, you take the seven years divided by the 85/6, it's a 0% loan, 12 months payments, so, you know, hopefully it's very straightforward to fill in those blanks, and that's sufficient for you. I worked hard to get that done and tried to address all of your concerns about what if they default, right? We put in that, you can take that legal action, that the lien, the, you know, so I tried point for point, we have the attorneys addressing it, if there's any edits to it, we'll find out, but I can share it with you once we get it back. With regards to?
Thank you for making me out to be a dummy counselor.
What's that?
I said, thank you for making me out to be a dummy counselor, because it didn't occur to me that we could have just done that.
It's okay, Ms. Dean.
I mean it in the, in the, no, in the most, not, no, the most, just straightforward, what I heard versus what you received, forgive me if I didn't give you exactly what you hoped for, and I was by no mean trying to assume that you could not do the math. And with regards to the grants versus the loans, Councilor Rivas also approached me about this, and so what I'd said to her was, I wish I could have come to you and whenever it was we came to ARPA in, or the town council, was that June, and approved these funds. I did not have the design of the program yet. We had come up with a few iter- have the, the design of the program yet. We had come up with a few iterations over the few years of talking about how to use ARPA funds, but then it was during that time of transition from the, the interim rule to the final rule that we were going ahead with this ARPA. And what I heard initially was that we could use these funds for anything, quote unquote. You can only use these funds for, with that freedom, if it's government services. And when we started to dig in, or when I started to dig in, and then was making what I thought was the appropriate, you know, program within the guidelines, it was hard balance, trying to convince my department that we needed to go this, this, this road of, you know, it's a little stricter, it's, it's not as lenient, it doesn't have as many grants, but it follows the law. In the end, it was almost getting to the point where I thought we were going to have to follow prevailing wage and procurement laws, which would have, you know, definitely hindered what the goal of this grant was. And thankfully, I got the town manager involved, he got the town attorneys involved, we were able to resolve it and come up with the simplest, but what we think is most legal program we could. It can't be a grant. If it's a grant, then it's, it's, it's treated differently. So with this loan program, it's allowed to fall into the lost revenue category for reporting purposes. It's the easiest process for us. Once it's been obligated for the first time, it counts as spending it. So then when it comes back to that revolving fund, we don't have to worry about whether it's considered program, program income. We don't have to worry about what that payment time is and whether it gets spent by 2026, right? It's, it's a much easier process for everybody. So I think we've landed on the sweet spot.
All right, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steves?
Um, yeah, just to clarify, Hannah sent us the blank version, but if, in my electronic packet, the, the full, full, filled out version is in the packet. I don't know if you saw it, but you didn't. And so, so I think then we need to be doubly careful then to make sure that we can figure out how we're going to use the rest of the funding for this project so that it doesn't come back to bite us at the end of the ARPA, at the end of the ARPA deadlines. Because we'll still, we, at the moment, we still have a significant sum of money there that we want to use for these kinds of things. But if nobody's using it, then we might have an issue. So.
If I may through you, Chair?
Certainly.
I'm very confident these funds will be spent and will be coming back to ARPA to ask for potentially uncovered $100,000 and more. If it seems to, if it seems to be doing, producing what the intended goal is, right?
Hopefully, absolutely.
And if the intended goal is to see these storefronts open, thanks to your willingness to try this, then we're going to see a ripple effect. Fingers crossed.
That's all I have.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor to amend item number 27 to add the words "in the amount of $85,600." Any further discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? We now have the amended motion on the floor. Any further discussion on the amended motion on the floor? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Like I said, there was a lot of good conversation to have on it, even though we kind of got off track, but it was great to hear. I, I will say that it, to my eyes, when we first gave the 250,000 at ARPA and the Town Council approved it, it seemed very, very simple in our brains and that, just go ahead and let's get a zero interest loan out there, or grant, whatever it may be. I do appreciate the, the hard discussions you guys had downstairs, but I think we have a better product because of that and that we don't have to answer to it in the near future, come 2026, when all the funds have to be, and we have hopefully $250,000 in a revolving account of some sort. Thank you.
Right.
Ms. Dean?
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 28, vote to approve an application for $20,000 from the Micro Projects Program to fund a marketing campaign to educate Southbridge residents on our existing community transportation resources and to authorize the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
I move.
Second?
Motion by Councilor Dow, second by Councilor Steves. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, 4 to 0 in favor of. I do make a motion to amend this because something that Counselor Steves had brought up, noticed that, what was it, the, the match? I think it was 20%, 20% match. So make a motion to amend to state, "Right after resources," and I could send this to Sue and the chair as well, "right after resources, comma, and allow the transfer of $4,000 from the Town Council Reserve, account number 001132TAC578100, comma, to account Micro Projects Program Grant, Marketing for Community Transportation, to ensure the town can meet the 20% match requirement and allow town manager to sign all related paperwork."
Second?
We have a motion by Counselor Adams and a second by Counselor Steves. The motion to be submitted in writing by Counselor Adams.
Great. I'll get that over to you and Sue.
Very good. Discussion on the amendment. Counselor Adams?
I do want to make note here, the reason why we're asking out of Town Council Reserve at this moment is for a funding source so we can get the application processed. But the intent is, and it's on the agenda on ARPA meeting on Thursday afternoon, to request ARPA provide $4,000 to cover this cost and then have the Town Council voter on it later this month.
Any discussion? Counsel Steves?
Just a quick clarification through you to the manager. As a reserve fund, we don't have, this doesn't require a two-thirds vote, does it? I mean, it's not stabilization, but...
I don't think so. I don't think it requires.
No, it's a majority vote.
I don't think it does either, but I just wanted to check.
Any further discussion on the amendment? All we're doing is amending. We're not doing any action at this point, except to amend. Very good. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Very good. So we have an amended motion. Any discussion on the amended motion? Counselor Rivas?
I just had a question about the marketing campaign and whether the funds include marketing in other languages and inclusive messaging and signage for this campaign.
If I may through you, Chair, we will certainly make sure we do that. Thank you for the recommendation.
Thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to go through this, and I probably sort of briefed it. I did at the PND. Ms. Dean told me to. So this was out of a CMMPO meeting through CMRPC, and something that we looked at as far as new vehicles for the community center slash senior center to help support that cause. But the fact is, once we started digging and Ms. Dean set the meeting up, CMRPC, CMMPO, WRTA pretty much said, "You already have a lot of assets. Why don't we take a look at those assets?" And we said, "Where are those?" And they said, "This is where you need the marketing grant." And so we can get that out there first, and then hopefully near, near future, we could look at the senior center providing support to our local seniors. So, and they're willing to work with us through not only ADA individuals, but the youth, the schools, QCC, and I'll go from there. That's it. It's a great opportunity.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Thank you, Ms. Dean.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, item number 29, council's forum. It started over there today. Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just would like to announce that we will be having a curbside committee meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. I'd also like to ask that something be put on our town website identifying our IT director. I was trying to locate him the other day. I couldn't find anything on the town's website mentioning him anyway. And also, I would just like to add, I'd like to say good luck to the town manager and his future job. And I just hope, hope that you are closer to your family and you get exactly what it is that you wanted over there. So, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Muntigney?
Thank you very much. I don't have too much to say tonight, but I would like to congratulate all the members of the Town Manager Search Committee for being appointed. I have seen a few of these in all the years filming for cable, and most of those citizens have been involved one way, shape, or form before. And I think that with the two counselors and the citizens there, I think it is very important, and I think they will make the right decision, that the most local candidate be taken heavy into consideration. Of course, everything else that is involved in being a town manager is important and, and just as important. But we really need to make sure, because, you know, good, bad, and different, you don't want someone to have to drive an hour and a half all the time anyway. I would really appreciate if you would just hear that you should please take great consideration to local candidates. Thank you.
Also?
Yep.
Very good. Counsel Lazo?
Yeah, I would like to just comment on Mr. Varon. Tonight, when he was in front of us, a lot of history ran through my mind. He was my football coach. Went undefeated two years in Pop Warner, played in the national championship in the Tangerine Bowl. He was my teacher, roaring twenties, founder of the Hall of Fame. I ended up serving with him on the committee. The gentleman has been in Southbridge. His father-in-law was on a board of selectmen. His father was involved politically. I mean, the Varon family is, is part of the fabric of Southbridge. I wish him the very best in, in retirement. 90 years old, he only looks about 60. I was going to request, you know, Southridge High Football Coaching Position opened up. I thought maybe he would be interested in that. But good luck to Mr. Varon. He's always told me to call him Lefty, but he will always be Mr. Varon.
Mr. Varon.
I know, I, I, I just keep hopping on the DPW stuff, and this is all kudos. I was at a DPW meeting and everybody was going, "Ask Phil, or do this, do that, that, to the resident here and the resident there." And you look at it and you say, "Wow, you know, why, that's a lot of stuff to put on one person's plate." And then when you wake up the next morning and Gulfwood Road is on and this is going, and you just run right around as a counselor, look at those complaint areas, and they're taken care of in 24 hours. You know, maybe I should just run for Phil's Fan Club, but I think this guy would make a great DPW director. We're, we're looking everywhere for a DPW director. We're getting, we're getting all kinds of negotiations and everything. And here's a guy running our maintenance of our town flawlessly, motivating the men that weren't motivated on the leadership. Look at that ice storm we had. I really have to give kudos to the rank and file that showed up and tackled that. And then with all the problems, the next day, the loaders went out and everything got done. I've just never seen it as good as it is right now. Really consider Phil for that position. I, I think, you know, it's one of those things, if he's weak in some areas, he's worth working with to make him the guy. That's all I have to say. I wish TM good luck in the future and all your future endeavors. Don't be a stranger. Come on down, 7 Mill Street. You promised me. You owe me one on the way out of town. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Rivas?
So a few things. I also want to wish the town manager lots of luck. Buena suerte. Muchas gracias. Por todo lo que has hecho por nuestra comunidad. And I wish him well, like, like everyone else said, "Don't be a stranger," although that's, that's a far drive to come and visit.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I want to say to everyone, what a great new year and start to the new year here with so many different projects that were presented today. And the movement at Henry Street Park is amazing to me. And just having grown up in that area and hearing about our families and our residents that are going to be able to utilize that park in so many different ways that were not accessible before, I think that is, is a great accomplishment. You know, and all of the work of so many different departments in bringing our town forward and doing all of these different things. So I do think that we have a hard-working team here in, in Southbridge, and that is evident in all different departments all the way across. I want to bring attention to some of the teens from the Tri-Community YMCA who represented Southbridge in such an incredible way. Back on December 23, Elsterbridge Village's Christmas by candlelight event, as they shared Puerto Rican Christmas songs and played instruments with me while we were sharing Puerto Rican Christmas traditions with visitors. You know, we, we don't give our, our students enough credit for a lot of different things that they do and how well they represent us when they are performing in other communities. And I also want to mention that we have two students who have stepped up for our new Southbridge Cable Access Show, Youth Voices with Counselor Rivas, Elijah and Jade Oforio, who represented Southbridge at the EL Education National Conference in December and who are going to be amazing on this show. I can't wait. So if you have any students, we're still accepting applications. You can reach out to me, to jrevas@southbridgemass.org or at 508-981-4081. Any student that resides in Southbridge, middle, high school student, preferably, you know, obviously from town, that is engaging, is interested in talking about all of the issues that we debate up here at the dais. We really want to hear from students and their opinions and their perspectives. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steves?
I don't have a whole lot. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. McCall for all the stuff that you've done in the last couple of years and for weaving the various pieces that kind of had fallen through the cracks at the beginning of your tenure and had previously been on the floor, and you picked it up and put them together again and, and in ways that seem to work. So thank you very much. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Very good. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to say thank you for fixing the roof.
I used my magic wand.
And then also, good luck with the new job. And are we being punched in here in the winters, freezing in the summers? It's 65 degrees right here. So I'm not sure if we're being punched to be here or not. And also, I just want to add a small comment. It's too bad how hard to do business in Southbridge. Thank you.
Very good. Vice Chair Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll hold off my remarks for the town manager. Hopefully, he's not taking PTO time between now and the end of February. But that being said, ARPA presentation will be given to the Town Council next, at the next meeting to kind of give an audit of ourselves and where we're at and what we've spent, what's still available and all that kind of stuff. Let's see, we did, as the Town Council, we received a lot of kudos for, for the premium pay. A lot of staff members had reached out to me to say thank you to the Town Council, but the, those individuals really, really deserved it. And so I just say thank you to them back. National Law Enforcement Day was today. I posted on social media, so I want to say thank you to all of our police officers and all the others that sacrificed so much for us. And so I want to say thank you to them. And as far as the Town Manager Search Meeting, the next, the first meeting, I'll, next day or so, I'll have, I'll have a good date, hopefully, to be able to present to, to push out there. And I'll be reaching out to those individuals that the chair had appointed to introduce ourselves. I would ask that, there was a lot of recommendations up here today. Please send me an email, residents, whatever it may be. And what I'll do is I'll compile those suggestions and see what we can do with that. But it's good to hear from the community themselves, including the town councils up here, what their thoughts are. And lastly, I, I will be reaching out, I'll talk to the town manager about this and the chair in the near future about taping all meetings. I, I know there is the open meeting law, but I think it's very, that'd be very wise of us if we taped every single meeting, that not just the Town Council, not the subcommittees. I'm talking about every board, committee, commission, where we can, obviously not an executive session. That provides a real, true transparency of what is actually happening during those meetings. And I have my reasons behind that, but I would just say I, I will reach out to our leadership to see what we can do from there and our Town Council as well. That being said, Jen, item number 30, discuss, discussion of next meeting date, which will be January 23, 2023, here, here at the dais, 7:00 PM. Chair?
Thank you, Vice Chair Adams. Item number 31, vote to enter into executive session?
Don't, don't do that yet. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I forgot to, threw me for a loop here. My apologies for interrupting. I got a phone call today from Harrington Hospital, their Safety Division, inviting all council members to an active shooter drill, which will be Wednesday... all council members to an active shooter drill, which will be Wednesday here, over here at the hospital, at, from 8:30 to 10:00 AM, and there'll be some classes given, possible drills, and these individuals that are training, the staff of Harrington Hospital, are coming from Quantico, Virginia, and if you don't know Quantico, Virginia, that's Marine Corps Base Quantico, and also you have the FBI headquarters over there as far as the training of FBI recruits. So that's the town council themselves. You're more than welcome. It's at 8:30 to 10 o'clock. It's going to be in conference room one and two on the first floor. Just let me know if you'd like to attend, and I'll reach out to Lucas and, and respond in kind to him. So, thank you. It's all yours, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Very good. Item number 31. Vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, and the chair does so declare. Counsel McHeddy.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem going into executive session tonight, but the information that I received on what we are talking about tonight, I don't see how this is executive session material. I just don't see it. It seems to me that the, the public should know about what we're talking about tonight. I will vote to go into executive session. I just want to make my position clear on it. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else wish to discuss it? We need a motion, we need a.
A motion.
Okay, we have a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Counselor Adams, a second by Counselor Dow, to go into executive session. Mr. Manager, you wish to address?
Well, at least one of the items I asked the town council, should it be covered under executive session? And they said yes, the town attorney that was handling one of the matters, so.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Rivas?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yep.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel McHeddy?
Yes.
Counsel Montigny?
No.
Counsel Lazo?
No.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Six, two. Motion passes with Montigny and Lazo against. We're moving into executive session, and we will not return to open session.